All right, good evening and welcome. It's six o'clock. It is the February 24th, 2020 regular release scheduled East Long Meadow Public Schools School Committee meeting. Call the meeting in two orders, six o'clock. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped tonight, and I would ask that everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll start with roll call. Sophia, please.
Sophia Yakubuji, student representative.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich Fuchero.
Sarah Trilio.
Gregory Thompson.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Kathy Soledi recording, Sophia.
Excellent, thank you all. And we have some announcements to make, some winners to mention.
We do, so we have our four Grin Spoon winners, and what I'm going to ask each person to do, if I may, I'm going to read your name and give me a chance to read through some of the comments that were put on your nomination sheets, so everybody can get an idea of the incredible educators we have. And then I'll just ask you to come down, and we'd like to all shake your hands. So first one is Marima Logan Kanje Alosi, and she's a Meadowbrook teacher. She is our teacher who is within her first three years of her educational career, and some comments from her colleagues who nominated her. She is kind and works well with students from preschool through second grade, using the best teaching practices. Having attended the Berklee School of Music, she brings music into her classroom and other creative opportunities that just enhances the curriculum being taught. Marima has proven to be an asset to our building as a hard worker and a team player. Marima, please.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thanks for having me. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Drink in the atmosphere.
Richard, are you trying to take credit for Marima?
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. Our next 2020 Grin Spoon Excellence in Teaching Award winner is Lori Fallon from Mountain View, and Lori is a grade four teacher. These are some comments from her colleagues. When she came on board at Mountain View, her calming presence was instantly felt in the school. She has been able to work with her students not only on the standards but also on the And here's what some of his colleagues are saying about him. importance of community. Joe is an excellent communicator with students, parents, staff, and administrators. She has a way of building up her students' confidence levels without them even noticing. Joe always has a positive attitude, and he does his best to spread a positive message I'm going to need a little bit of that. She practices reducing classroom anxiety as a regular part of her daily instruction. throughout the entire building. He has a quiet, confident demeanor that creates a calming effect in the building. Joe Hudson. Her tone and mannerisms allow her students to take risks in their learning that they
Congratulations. Thank you, Richard. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you.
otherwise might not take.
Thank you so much.
And last but certainly not least, we have Christine Ruger, who is at the high school Lori Fallon.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Yeah. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much.
and is a social studies teacher.
Congratulations.
And here's what her colleagues are saying about her. Chris has demonstrated an extraordinary dedication and effectiveness and collegiality as an educator here at East Long Meadow High School for over, I want to say the years, 20 years. Her intellect, organizational and planning skills, rapport with students, understanding of curricula, and commitment to education is beyond exceptional. Chris challenges her students and works tirelessly to find the most creative ways to get the best out of them. In return, it has been inspirational to see the affection and appreciation the students have for her. at home, probably still be watching us at home at a later time, but in May, all four Students, former students, and staff all speak very highly of Mrs. Ruger, referring to their time in her classroom with fondness, respect, and an appreciation for her pedagogical of these winners will be honored again at the Grin Spoon banquet, and they will receive approach to her courses and content. Chris Ruger.
Congratulations.
a number of different prizes, from possibility to take graduate courses, a certain amount
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think we got a couple of photos each. of money for supplies in their rooms, certainly a plaque, and then possible memberships, if
Yeah, well.
So just to one, let's give all our winners a round of applause again. I remember correctly, to either the Y or other organizations in terms of health and fitness. So the celebration doesn't end here, it's going to continue, and soon you will be receiving an invitation from us because we want you to all come back for a group picture that we'll do with the reminder, but that will be at a later date. So one more round of applause for the incredible. Thank you very much. Everyone is welcome to stay, it's going to be a riveting meeting. Please grab chairs for both Mr. Ferdet and Mr. Wright.
Change and sit down and relax.
Okay, let's move along. We have some minutes for approval tonight.
I make a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes of February 3rd, 2020.
Okay, motion is made, and seconded discussion. Hearing in all the favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Committee and subcommittee communication, Sophia.
Oh, okay. So I was able to attend the last meeting with the Diversity and Equity Committee, where Cle was going to be present, but it's a standing committee now, so we'll meet again. And so we were able to kind of close out with them and come up with what we've been waiting to all along, which is kind of trying to find possible solutions to certain things we might be seeing in data. And so now we're just waiting on them to kind of give us a final report, and then we'll go over that. I forget the exact date that they said.
April 13th, I think.
Yeah. So then after that, we'll just kind of get to discuss that. And then also kind of with students, in athletics, winter sports have kind of ended mostly, but we have teams in playoffs, so that's kind of awesome. I know we have some basketball and then also hockey that are going to playoffs this week, so.
Same night.
Yeah.
Nothing kept the helicopter going.
Yeah.
The school chopper.
Yes.
Girls' basketball and.
I'm talking about Long Meadow.
Is that a regular?
No.
Okay. Bill.
Great job by ELEAF at their gala a couple of weeks ago. They did a phenomenal job, and congratulations again to all the award winners. I also had a chance to catch up with Michael Ferdet over at Maple Shade. We could go Friday, and what I was actually able to witness was fifth graders doing both 3D printing and robotics and phenomenal programs. I mean, there's some really, really great things going on over there. And kudos to Tim Allen for providing mentors for the fifth grade robotics classes, and you know, they're interacting with these kids. It was really a great sight to see middle schoolers coming over to help them out. Good time, good things going on over there.
I attended a couple athletic events and a number of meetings, and the meetings themselves are now on our agenda, the Equity and Diversity, as Sophia already said, and the collaborative committee, so the Grin Spoon, which we oversee, and we're on there for their calendar.
Okay, Sarah.
I had the opportunity alongside of Pam and Gordon to begin our conversations with the Fair Professionals Unit to begin conversations around their new contract. So we had our first meeting, and we have a few more scheduled. We were excited by the comments at our first meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Just a reminder, tomorrow night we have a meeting with the town council.
Yes.
Are you going to get smoothed up by the agenda or who's to talk? We just went to the top.
I'll throw as much weight around, so we'll be exactly where we are.
I think it's a long meeting. I think we should plan.
Bring snacks. Okay, thank you. We will move forward with our opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Beckett, how are you, my friend?
Hi, my name is Beckett Vino. I'm an eighth grader at Berchpin Park Middle School. I'm here before you guys tonight on behalf of many students, teachers, and many parents as well. So back in November, December, I believe, I don't know an exact date, but a survey was sent out to staff and family members and ELPS about this 2020-2021 school start date for the beginning of the school year. So I heard that it was going to be, we were going to be going Tuesday to Friday of next year, and many people were not happy with that decision, and I got 260 signatures from mostly middle school students, middle school teachers, some high school students, and a few parents, which all support my decision as to try to have you guys reconsider so that we're only going Tuesday to Thursday next year. And many people would be on vacations that Friday, and soccer tournaments or sports tournaments that Friday, and attendance rates probably wouldn't be that good because many students would be out for vacations or tournaments, and the students would be missing some work and instruction for the beginning of the year. And high school students would have jobs that would plan to be working that Friday since this has been the same schedule that's been running in ELPS for 10 years. And I have the survey data that Mr. Smith provided to me. Eighty-seven percent of the staff said they wanted to keep the school calendar the same for next year, keep it the current Tuesday to Thursday, and a good amount of parents, like 50.67%, said they wanted to keep it the same. So I'm just hoping you guys will reconsider and your decision of giving us Tuesday to Thursday with Friday off. Thank you.
Do you want to leave this with us, Beckett?
Oh, yeah. Come on.
Beckett, do you have a copy?
Yeah, I have one, yeah. A little. It's detached, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Yep. Just Beckett, what I can say to that is we did have a lengthy discussion on the Friday, and I know you were part of, or at least heard part of it. Part of the discussion was to continue the first week of school in terms of continuity for students to get back into the swing of it. So the rationale of the committee was to have the Friday so that we continuously, you know, start off with a four-day week and a five-day week, and so that was just part of the discussion. I know you know that a little bit.
Yeah.
Certainly appreciate you bringing this all forward and putting the effort towards it together, and always we take in input. So thank you for bringing it all together for us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move forward then. We have a district-wide presentation this evening.
We do, and we have the leadership team here. I'll give them a moment to get assembled. You'll create, wheel some chairs in there. This presentation, as we've done in years past, is just to give you an idea of where we are in the district, on our district goals, what's going on, and as you could see earlier with our four Grin Spoon winners, we have incredible staff, incredible student population, and really pretty incredible community, so there are a lot of good things going on. Beckett's presentation alone shows that. Everybody set? All right, just as I said, this gives you an idea of where we are at the sort of midpoint or just a little bit past the midpoint of this school year. We have our leadership team here. Just a quick reminder, we have a quick group. At the beginning of the year, we do set SMART goals, not only at the district level but at the building level, and then each group, we can have team SMART goals, or we can break into individual SMART goals, and basically they're specific, measurable, attainable, yet challenging, relevant, and timely goals. Back down below this when I go through this, and every student should be kept in our minds as we set these goals. Moving on, I think everybody is pretty aware of our district mission, and simply put, we're looking to help students achieve and learn responsibility, gain skills, so that they can meet the challenges and become leaders, our leaders for tomorrow. Our theory of action, sorry, I was going to go over that. Theory of action is if we can create incredible core instruction while continuing to foster safe and nurturing environment, our students will, as they journey pre-K through 12, come out at graduation with the 21st century skills that they need to achieve that mission. So our first goal, as you go around, all the goals are pretty integrally related, is really looking at how we continue to identify and support every student in all different ways, and what that means is you want to make sure that we're supporting, obviously academics, but we're also supporting their social growth, their emotional growth, and as they build skills and responsibility and are feeling comfortable throughout the grades in all of our schools, they will, all our students will be able to continue to learn and grow as they move through our schools. That's what the first goal is about. At the end of the year, if we're doing these things well, we'd like to see 90% or higher of our students reporting that not only they're feeling safe, but they're feeling comfortable in our schools and in our classrooms, and that 90% or higher of our staff will also report that they're feeling safe and that they feel they work in a respectful and supportive environment. Also under this, because we know it's consistent with students who may struggle in their academics, is we'd like to reduce overall for the district our chronic absenteeism so that it's back under 5% or lower. So along those lines, just to give you some feedback on some surveys that we've taken within the last year. Last year, we talked a great deal about the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. This is something that came through the Youth Safety, East Long Meadow Youth Safety Group. It's a survey that we will be taking every other year in grades eight, 10, and 12, and it's a nationally norm survey. Some of those results, there's a, I think there was a total of 120 to 130 questions, so these certainly aren't all of the results, but these are some key results that we take a look at and discuss pretty frequently in our buildings. One, I feel safe at school, and you see the numbers, grade eight, 88%, grade 10, 79%, grade 12, 75%. Good percentages, we'd like to see those get even better. We think we certainly are in a very good place with where our school climates are, but we feel we should be improving upon those numbers. This is another key one. It's actually been in, I think, every survey that we've utilized in the district over the last nine years or so, and it's that at school of at least one adult who cares about me. We think that's incredibly important, that all of our students at least have one go-to person. We'd like to think that they could go to anybody in our schools, but that's very important. And you see that in this case, it's 88% at grade eight, 87% at grade 10, and then grade 12, we jump into the 90s with 91%. I'm proud of that, but we can get that better as well. Teachers and staff treat me with respect at this school. That goes right back to the fostering supportive environment that we talked about in our Theory of Action. And again, we're in decent percentages, but we're looking to improve. Grade 8, 87%, grade 10, 84%, and grade 12, 87%. The last one here was something that we've started to discuss and probably has a few things to sort of uncover here, you know, what are students perceiving, what is the reality, what are staff perceiving, how much do staff really have reported to them, or how much is assumed that they know. So there's a lot of things to this question. The question is, adults at my school take quick action when they find out that a student is bullying or being cruel to another student. And so these are percentages that we really need to dig into. Grade eight, 73%, grade 10, 50%, grade 12, 51%. And so those are discussions that will be ongoing, and we really need to start to look at this.
I would add one thing, Mr. Smith. I find this wording very, you can take this many different ways.
Absolutely.
Does that mean a student tells an administrator about something?
Correct.
Or does it mean, to pick a mind, I'm walking down the halls and something happens, I don't see it, and the students think I didn't do anything, but I didn't see it. I mean, so what is this, what are you referring to?
And so I think that's what we need to start to get at, is what was the understanding of the question?
Yeah.
But also, what is the communication? How well are we doing that open communication about things such as bullying and fighting and conflict that may be happening in our schools? But I certainly don't disagree. I think that's where it becomes, to use the proverbial quote, it becomes like an onion. We have to continue to peel it back and find out what's going on there.
One other quick comment is, if you go back to the first bullet where it says, "I feel safe at school," and you look at those percentages, and then you go down to the last, when you're talking about bullying, so there might be something going on there as well.
Sure.
So I agree that.
Obviously, there are many individuals who do feel safe, but maybe they're feeling that others are somehow in a different situation.
Yeah, and that speaks to the point of you've got to peel it apart. Okay, thank you.
So, and certainly that's not the only survey. DESI does a survey called the Vocal Survey. Again, we're giving you just a little bit of a snapshot of some of the things. This comes after students in different grade levels finish the MCAS exam, and then they go right into this survey as part of the MCAS process. And I'll have Mr. Brown kind of walk you through some of this data. But it's interesting to start to compare how the PNA and the vocal data compare and contrast. And there may be, to the both points that were made, there may be questions that we find in the vocal survey that are asked more clearly and specifically, and that would help us to understand the responses we're getting from our students.
The other thing about the vocal is it does go down to fourth grade. So we had high participation rates. It was 100% for fourth and fifth grade, 99% for eighth grade, and in the 90s for 10th grade. So it's good that our students did take that after taking the MCAS, took the time to take the survey.
The important thing here is that these are not percentages, so they're index scores, and schools with typical school climates is this middle column, and the scales are a little bit different for each grade level, but all of our scores fell within schools with typical school climates. We ended up with some scores that were equal to the state, a few that were below, so there's some work to be done, but in general, we're doing well in terms of school climate. So this score over here is the school climate, and it's the kind of the composite of the engagement, safety, and environment questions. Engagement has to do with cultural competence, relationships, and participation. Safety, they go into emotional, physical, and safety and cyberbullying, bullying, and then the environment asks about instructional environment, the mental health environment, and the discipline environment. So for grade four, for the overall school climate, it was, the index score was 61 and the state was 61. Grade five, the index score is 55 and the state was 57, so a little bit below. Grade eight was 43 and the state was 43, and for grade 10, it was 40 and the state was 44. Our bullying index score was 51, and it's actually better, sorry, to have a higher score than the state. You want the score to be high because it means it's lower bullying. I can go into it more, but compared to the bullying question in the last, it looks like we're still doing okay in terms of school climate.
The scores clearly, according to this index, put us into that middle range where you see a top on the slide with the boxes that have the orange at the top of them, and so, thank you. So right now, we're clearly in that middle range where about 70% of the schools in Massachusetts are sitting. Certainly, we're looking, regardless of the survey, we're looking to move ourselves to the top 15%.
Question about this, does school climate include engagement, safety, and environment? Are they four different categories?
Yes. The engagement, safety, and environment are all part of the school climate. And they just break it down. Exactly.
And we are on the typical line, I can see. Right, yeah, we're in the middle of that. And this will be something that students will be taking, I believe, every year now with the MCAS. So we'll continue to have information from this and from other surveys, and these are discussions that we're having at the leadership team level, but I think also at the building level, and they're important conversations. It also goes to show you sort of the work that we've been doing with our goals as we've transformed them the last few years, and right in line with what the departments looking at as well. Students, all of our students should be able to feel comfortable and safe so that they can access the curriculum and go after their learning in the best possible way. Along those same lines, what we've been working on as many districts, I'm sure across Massachusetts have been working on, is how do we start to coordinate all of the services and support programs that we're offering into a more identifiable system or a multi-tiered system of support? What do we currently have in the district? What do we need to add as we do this work? And how does it all come together? And so that's work that we started on this summer, back in June with the district management group and the entire leadership team, to start to look at what do we have in the district? What does it mean to start to put together this tiered system? How does it all work? Then in September, we sent a team of administrators, coaches, counselors, and so forth from across the district to one of the department workshops. We followed that up in December with another DESI workshop, and for the most part, a different group. There were some crossovers, but a different group because we're really looking at allowing more people to get into this conversation, develop leadership across all levels of our district, and make sure that we're doing this work well, and clearly define it so that it's East Long Meadows definition and not necessarily, you know, Wilbraham's definition, Long Meadows definition, or for that matter, we want guidance from DESI. I can go into it more, but compared to the bullying question in the last, it looks like we're still doing okay in terms of school climate.
The scores clearly, according to this index, put us into that middle range where you see a top on the slide with the boxes that have the orange at the top of them. And so, thank you. So right now, we're clearly in that middle range where about 70 percent of the schools in Massachusetts are sitting. Certainly, we're looking, regardless of the survey, we're looking to move ourselves to the top 15 percent.
Question about this, does the school climate include engagement, safety, and environment? Are they four different categories?
Yes. The engagement, safety, and environment are all part of the school climate.
Okay.
And they just break it down.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And we are on the typical line, I can see.
Right.
Yeah, we're in the middle of that. And this will be something that students will be taking, I believe, every year now with the MCAS. So we'll continue to have information from this and from other surveys, and these are discussions that we're having at the leadership team level, but I think also at the building level. And they're important conversations. It also goes to show you sort of the work that we've been doing with our goals as we've transformed them the last few years. We're right in line with what the departments looking at as well. Students, all of our students should be able to feel comfortable and safe so that they can access the curriculum and go after their learning in the best possible way. Along those same lines, what we've been working on, as many districts, I'm sure across Massachusetts have been working on, is how do we start to coordinate all of the services and support programs that we're offering into a more identifiable system or a multi-tiered system of support? What do we currently have in the district? What do we need to add as we do this work? And how does it all come together? And so that's work that we started on this summer, back in June with the district management group and the entire leadership team, to start to look at, what do we have in the district? What does it mean to start to put together this tiered system? How does it all work? Then in September, we sent a team of administrators, coaches, counselors, and so forth from across the district to one of the department workshops. We followed that up in December with another DESI workshop. And for the most part, a different group. There were some crossovers, but a different group because we're really looking at allowing more people to get into this conversation, develop leadership across all levels of our district, and make sure that we're doing this work well. And clearly define it so that it's East Long Meadows definition and not necessarily, you know, Wilbraham's definition, Long Meadows definition, or for that matter, we want guidance from DESI, but we certainly want to make it our own, what's going to work within East Long Meadow. With that, as we have attended these workshops, we've now developed a district team that is looking at this work, and that is inclusive of administrators, of teachers, of counselors, really representative of everyone across the district. And after our first meeting, we realized that maybe we hadn't done a good enough job getting all voices at the table. So we started to work with the group that was at that meeting to identify others who we should be bringing into that work. We've done so and started to meet at least monthly with this group.
Another area of work was professional development around social-emotional learning. And so that also includes cultural responsive teaching because it's a way to remove the barriers of implicit bias in order to make Tier One accessible for all students. And so we began some work with the NCCJ. It's the National Committee, Conference for Community and Justice, and Sophia was part of that work. We worked, we had a two-day workshop, their Bridges Workshop, with 25 high school students to build some leadership. And then, we even appreciated the work so much that we invited them to our November 5th PD Day. And so this slide shows just how well-received they were in terms of the workshop. Even though it was a tough topic, everyone responded that they really got a lot out of it and wanted more opportunities. So we also had Katie Novak come, who is an expert on universal design for learning. And that's obviously connected to social-emotional learning because, again, it's about removing barriers. And that was also, her keynote speech was well-received as well as her workshop. She had one workshop on elementary, UDL in elementary classrooms and another on secondary classrooms.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Thirty-six were sponsored, so this was one workshop offered among any workshops?
Right.
So 36 people chose to go to this.
Right. And I just highlighted the one for the NCCJ.
Okay.
And in March, we're going to have someone named Paul Gorstie, he started EdChange. He does a lot of work around equity and asset-based learning. And Jessica Minahan, who works with anxiety, children who have anxiety and trauma. So we're continuing the work with the Social-Emotional Learning PD for teachers.
And all of this work, we're trying to connect, that's what's part of the chore of the MTSS committee that's been formed, but NCCJ, the National Conference for Community and Justice, was introduced to us last year through our Diversity and Equity Steering Committee. And we found last year, and I'm sure Sophia can speak to this, I'm sure this year, that same sort of balance and, I don't know if conflict is too strong a word, but for the organization, the district, and the adults, we're trying to move as well as we can and as quickly and build something that's going to be better for all students. On that Diversity and Equity Committee, we have a number of students, and they would like to move faster. And NCCJ, and I understand that. And so that was a balance we were trying to achieve. NCCJ did a training last year for us and has come back, has been working with a group of students this year, so that our students will be facilitating some workshops, I believe, on the March Day, Professional Development Day. Right, Sophia?
Yeah, I can definitely speak to that. Like, I was kind of, I know the NCCJ kind of got introduced, I guess, last year to the school. And I kind of can see, like, what's been happening because I was able to become more involved in, like, this type of work, I guess, starting last year. And I think that that has a lot to do with, like, the school as a whole trying to be more involved and trying to form more connections and start more committees and things like that. So I can definitely see that happening because now it's become something that, like, I'm able to take part in a lot of different committees and have a lot of different conversations with, like, teachers, administrators, other students in the school about kind of equity and diversity and things like that, which has definitely, like, increased a lot starting last year and then also this year. So it's great.
And certainly a credit to our students. A lot of these conversations before we even had a Diversity and Equity Committee began with our students.
Yeah.
Just voicing concerns and going to different people and asking questions in a very respectful and constructive way. And so that really did get the ball rolling to develop a district-wide committee to do more and get into these discussions, which are not always easy to start, but are very productive if you can go through them and come out with much better structure, much better climate, and much better recognition and clear ability for all students to engage and access all areas that ELHS offers. And that actually brings us to this slide, some of which I've already mentioned. But we are working with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity, CLE. They have basically facilitated most of our meetings, or actually all of our meetings so far this year with the Diversity and Equity Committee. But as Sophia mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we're now to the point where we've gone through a number of facilitated meetings with them. They have a lot of data. They have a lot of discussion notes from those meetings. They're starting to put together a report for us that we should hopefully get back in April, I believe.
And then this next slide is just some of the data that we looked at with CLE. They came and they did focus groups with students, with parents, with teachers. We looked at this kind of data, which is the number of students completing advanced coursework. We looked at PSAT data. We looked at survey data. They did a learning community survey with the entire staff of the district. So we really dug deep into looking at the data, trying to do a root, well, not trying, but we did a root cause analysis. And so we also drafted some improvements for the equity, and we did a tuning. So the work that we're doing for this report has really been a collaborative effort. It's not CLE doing it for us as much as CLE helping us to do the work that we need to do.
And actually, that's a key point. That was one of the main reasons why the Steering Committee, we looked at three different consulting groups to do this work. CLE was the only one who seemed to have that component where they tried to build the district's capacity, and in this case, the Steering Committee's capacity, to have these conversations and move forward and continue to structure a way to have these conversations in a safe and meaningful way. Continuing to build community, one of the, one part of our goals is always to continue to strengthen existing partnerships, to establish new partnerships, and any kind of outreach from the schools to the community or various organizations. One key one that helped our students not only academically, but I think in a number of different ways, is we were finally able to fully implement our one-to-one program spanning grades two through 12. And that's a partnership, it's just one aspect of a very comprehensive partnership that we have with the East Long Meadow IT Department, who is housed in some rooms up on the second floor of the high school. But in making this happen, their small department, with our help, we were able to not only establish an insurance program, to purchase well over 1,000 to 1,500 Chromebooks. Some Chromebooks we had already in inventory. And this early September, we distributed over 2,400 Chromebooks to our students. In grade six through 12, they're taking them home. And that's been pretty impressive. Probably most impressive is how well our 15-student high school interns have not only taken two different tasks as we were beginning to distribute the computers, but what they've learned and how they're helping their fellow classmates just with different things that may go wrong during the day with anyone's personal computer. They've been able to support and diagnose many things that can be handled very quickly. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if I put it here, probably up to 23 cracked screens. They have helped replace 23 cracked screens, which is certainly a huge help in keeping the computers viable in district in that cost-effective way of supporting things. Another new partnership, which is just starting to really take hold, but took a lot of preliminary work, is a group called River Valley Counseling has established a memorandum of agreement with us, and they are now working, hopefully they'll be working with all our schools before the end of the year. Each of our schools has met with them, but the goal has been, once they've met with the administration and counselors of a given school, then it's looking at, how can they supply a licensed therapist, licensed counselor, to be at that school at least one day a week to start working with our students? Something that we often in education recommended at team meetings, oh, we should pursue outside counseling, but we've never had a great remedy. We unfortunately always put it back on families, and that's not easy for families necessarily to find that piece or component that's discussed at team meetings. This is bringing it into the schools, creating a partnership where it's starting to work for our students. So we have 29 referrals at the high school, and I believe we're working two days a week. Is that correct, Mr. Page? At the high school, you have...
Yes, yes.
... counseling two days a week. And I think at least one day a week started at Burt's Land in the month of February.
Yep.
And they are continuing to interview candidates. They thought they had someone selected to help us at the elementary level. Unfortunately, that counselor did not choose to accept the position, so they're continuing to work to provide a counselor who will work with our elementary schools.
What is the funding source for that?
So the funding source for that, it's a great question, comes through the family insurance. So if they can work with us and build the insurance, then that's where they're getting, or how they're getting paid. And at the moment, we do not budget anything for it. There's a couple of different models. There's one school system, and we're doing research, that does budget a small amount to handle different things, maybe to increase hours of support and planning with the staff. But we figured at least year one, we needed to get into it, see what it looks like, and see how effective it is, you know, as a startup program. And if that's something we want to look to down the road, we can.
I think that's a tremendous support, especially considering if a student does have a 10:00 AM appointment.
Right.
Now they're having to leave school at 9:30, possibly not return until lunch. So just the minimal impact it's having on a student's day and the amount of hours they're actually being able to remain in the building and present for instruction with the support of the social-emotional piece, that's tremendous.
And the nice thing is, and this is where you start to infringe on, should you be budgeting? Because if it's not filling the insurance, then they're looking possibly for the school system. I think they're doing some planning with us, but their, I'm sure their recommendation as we continue to meet and review what's going on will be, you know, if you would like additional planning or additional follow-up, you know, this is what it might cost, and then we could look at possibly budgeting something.
I think there are only two insurance vendors that they don't accept.
Right.
So the majority of the students are covered, and at some point, that's a contingency we might want to think about for a really needy student. But nearly every provider is covered by it.
And where we've met some obstacles with either of those two insurance, we try to problem-solve. And not only are our staff in each of the schools incredibly helpful, Dr. Welsh, Mizla Bombard, our nurse leader, they're also trying to problem-solve. So this so far has been very fruitful, although I know from the elementary school's standpoint, they're waiting. They would like to have this happening now, so we're still trying to get there for hiring a staff member for that. Our Youth Safety Committee is still, continues, this is made up of East Long Meadow Public Schools, East Long Meadow Police. FIRE now has started to participate as well. Springfield Health and Human Services, the East Long Meadow Health Department are all involved in this group. And it's been in action for five years now. This year, we focused in on social media and vaping. Those were some of the fall events. Social media was back on the 19th. We're working on, we had done a vaping assembly last year for presentation. That was more for community. What we're looking hopefully to do this year is have something that's strictly for students around vaping. And we love high school students and middle school students. And anytime we can bring the District Attorney's Youth Advisory Board in, where you're looking at high school students that work with the District Attorney's Office from around Hampden County, that's always a huge bonus because they really stole the show, so to speak, when we did our social media. Parents were much more interested in asking the youth advisory panel about social media, how they talk about it with their parents, you know, what are some of the challenges, pitfalls, and so forth. And we have two ELHS students on that youth advisory, and I believe both are underclassmen, so they will be on there again, which is really great because in years past, we've had seniors on there, and they really only get one year of getting involved in some really important work. But this year, we have, I believe, a junior and maybe a sophomore. Am I right on that?
I think so.
Yeah. And so that's been impressive. We are planning an event that's more of a community event. Students certainly are welcome. But looking at marijuana and alcohol, given changes in some of the laws lately, how that's impacting schools, how that's impacting families. And so that's an event that we're planning. It'll be very similar to the very first event that we held as a Youth Safety Committee. We'll have the East Long Meadow Public Schools presenting. We'll have the East Long Meadow Police presenting, and probably the Springfield Health and Human Services presenting, and we'll rotate groups through those three venues. That seemed to be pretty effective in our very first presentation five years ago. And I think the District Attorney's Office, if they can come, will certainly help with the police department presentation. And so we're hoping to have that on March 25th.
I had mentioned NCCJ earlier, so I won't belabor it, but I did want to mention that one of the reasons why they've been very successful and we're inviting them back for our March PD is that their facilitators are so well-trained that they really create a safe space where people feel comfortable talking about difficult topics. And they've been working with our youth not only to present on the March 18th day, but they were accepted to present at the Transforming Education for Social Justice Conference at UMass as well.
So that's really exciting, actually, to have a group of students who not only will be facilitating one of the workshops on March 18th for us, and they're going on, or actually, they'll do the UMass event. So to get all the nervousness out of UMass, be experts when they come back to present for us. This is probably more outreach than a partnership because it was something that's happening through our Student Support Services Department and specifically Mizla Bombard, our nurse leader. As we moved into a new comprehensive health grant, that has brought on not only new learning and connections for us, but also new supports. And so through this grant, we've hired two care coordinators that are starting to work, hopefully in all of our schools. But what they're looking to do is partner with our student assistance teams and start to, wherever needed, have outreach to the homes. Home visits, home contact, and see where we're having challenges, probably specifically in some cases with students coming to school, and see what we can do to support and build a plan to get those students back into school on a consistent basis and make sure that education's not interrupted on a somewhat consistent basis for these students.
Those are two ELHS staff members?
So they are two part-time staff members that we've hired through the grant, yes. Something that is first this year, so we're just getting into it. And I'm sure the buildings can speak to some of that as they get into sort of what they're doing around supporting the whole child.
Late job share, so it's not two full-time, it's two people who share one.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Welsh. Actually, Dr. Welsh probably will be able to give more information on the next two partnerships. But Bay Path University has been a partner for a number of years with us. This year, they invited Dr. Welsh and me to... This year, they invited Dr. Welsh and me to participate in a focus group session as they are going through their accreditation review. And actually, it was on partnerships and community outreach and so forth. Not only were we happy to participate in that, but we continue to invite them to our full professional development day. They alert us as to different professional development or speaker series that they may be having at the university. And they're really very gracious about giving us space whenever they can for any number of professional development sessions. And it's pretty easy because it's the East Long Meadow campus right over here. We also continue to have their interns from various departments working through the district. I don't know if you can give more specifics on that.
Well, you and I had met last year with all of the department chairs for the School of Health and Human Services, which includes education, psychology. They have a doctorate of nursing program, occupational therapy, masters of public health. And so whenever there is an opportunity to have someone fulfill an internship, you know, we certainly want to accommodate that. We've had some, you know, some wonderful people, a real diversity of different areas, but it isn't just confined to student teaching. You know, we've had psych interns in the guidance office, we had someone with a specialization in substance abuse who, you know, was very well utilized. We've had occupational therapy. I'd like to get my hands on the nurses someday and so it's, you know, it behooves us to really kind of foster that relationship. I just want to give them a shout out because today I was notified through communication with Dr. Leary, who will be leaving soon, but that their education department was only one of four in the Commonwealth for colleges and universities to be awarded the designation of A for their elementary reading teacher prep program. So I think that's, you know, that certainly speaks very well to what they're doing to prepare teachers and I feel very fortunate that we can keep that relationship going to kind of get that level of expertise. Only three other schools were given that, you know.
Are both those schools at the East Long Meadow Campus School of Health and Communication?
Everything is, yes. That, all of those things are now housed at One Denslow Road.
Fantastic.
It's a mile away from all of our schools.
Yeah. Great. The East Long Meadow Campus better.
More modern.
So along with that partnership, we also have a pretty long partnership with Allen's College. Specifically, we've had interns over the last two semesters from their speech and language program, which is not only helpful to us, it certainly keeps that partnership going. We've scheduled courses through them in various years, but that's a partnership we want to keep viable and moving forward. I'm going to turn, stop speaking so much and turn it over to the buildings to talk a little bit about the work they're doing.
So our first goal is for supporting the whole child. I'll speak on behalf of all three elementary schools. First of all, my school, we sort of set out the year beginning our work for social emotional learning, sort of moving away from, still keeping some components of a response to intervention model, but moving away from that model and more toward a multi-tiered support system model. When various staff members at the beginning of the year had a training in this, we really felt like we needed to establish both an in-school and district-wide leadership team around looking at what schools do that have a really strong multi-tiered support system in place and what components of those schools sort of exist and what components really would work well for us to change and move toward this direction. So our leadership team, the in-school-based Maple Shade one, came up with, through our research, knowing and teaching the five social emotional learning competencies, improving our in-school and after-school curriculum and programming in this area, peer-to-peer and adult-to-student mentoring partnerships, and tiered academic and social emotional support. So we have evidence of a few of the things we're working on, the three small photographs, pictures on the right-hand side. We started a peer-to-peer mentor program, so our fifth-grade students adopt our third-grade classrooms. So peer mentors will sit with our third-grade students in the cafeteria at lunchtime and they'll go outside of the playground with them in recess. And in the elementary world, a lot of those social issues crop up during lunchtime and recess, so it's been a great support and they've been very motivated to work with the younger students in the building. So that's worked out sensationally for our lunch and recess with our peer mentoring model. And then that picture, you can't really see what's going on, but I'll explain it, that is something that, you know, we wanted to do with a lot of work that, some training that we went to in MIT, worked on what you do for peer mentorships in STEM education. So I was feeling like, how can we do a social emotional support component in an academic piece of what we're trying to improve for STEM instruction? And this is what Mr. Fonseca saw in action at Maple Shade and we thanked Dr. Allen for working with us. So Eileen Turnberg is in that picture, you can't really see her, she's way in the back in a peach sweater. She's a speech and language pathologist at Berksland Park Middle School and she runs the VEX robotics team. We just so happen to be transitioning into VEX robotics. We always use Lego Mindstorm EV3. We had a project Lead the Way grant, part of what comes with that grant is robotics and automation for fifth graders and they recommend the VEX platform. So this is our first year using VEX, our first year using peer mentors, and even Eileen Turnberg really working with Mr. Sears to get this going in the classroom. I've been in that room now three times. I want to go in every day because it's so exciting and the progress that they make is phenomenal. So today, they were designing their robots that could take a toxic waste from one area safely with robotics to another area and be stored safely in a holding spot. And so their robots have gone through weeks of failure and today, there was so much success that, and a lot of students recommended, we really think if you're getting stuck to work with your peer mentor from Berksland when they come see us once a week. So I thought that was phenomenal. And then the bottom picture is a new program that we have in one of our many before-school and after-school programs. We worked with district support to develop these. And this is the Girls Who Code program, which is where we're taking an underrepresented female population in the area of computer science and we're getting them excited and passionate and having fun both before school and after school, and that's run by our school librarian, Ms. Merrick. So these are some pieces that really make Maple Shade a great place, both socially, emotionally and academically. Oh, I'm sorry.
Moving on to the other two elementary schools.
In the fall, Meadowbrook School discussed how they were rolling out a new bullying prevention curriculum with grades one and two. They collected data through student exit surveys and you'll see that 88% of second graders know the three Rs to bullying prevention, which are recognize, report, and refuse bullying. So they added their data charts there to show the progress and the exceptional work that they're doing. And this is three months after instruction, so it's just been in place for three months and it's really good. The survey data also revealed that 170 out of 172 second graders responded with a plan for a trusted adult that they know they can report bullying to. So in addition, 93% of students remember a clear phrase to use to respond to bullying, "Stop, that's bullying." It's pretty simple, but very effective, so clearly they have data that supports that as well. Mr. Sheen and Mr. Hudson will roll out the bullying prevention units with grade one in the spring. And during a December 10th staff PD, Mr. Hudson and Mrs. Sheen facilitated a schoolwide social emotional learning professional development. They shared the definitions of social emotional learning as presented by DESI and CASL. So CASL is the Collaboration of Academic and Social Emotional Learning. We began the formal discussion of where we are with social emotional learning and planning and implementation. We reflected on strategies that are already embedded and effective in our daily practice, such as greetings at the doors with musical, with special menus. We also reflected on social emotional learning's impact on educators. And the research shows that teachers who process high levels of social competence are better able to protect themselves from burnout by developing and managing nurturing relationships with their students, managing behavior in the classrooms, and serving as behavioral role models for children, regulating their own emotions. They utilize their social emotional learning mentor in many ways, and so here are some ways that they utilize that position. Data collection for FBAs to support students during transitions from new schools, assisting students going through evaluation processes, the evaluation process who did not currently have any support service in place, but exhibit challenges that require more support. They also use the position by teaching and modeling coping strategies within the student's natural classroom setting, and then collaborating with teachers, with the BCBA counselor on student needs and progress. Mountain View School, I'll present for Elaine. They agreed with author and presenter George Furos, who said, "Schools have to be about more than academics. Some of the most creative and innovative students in your school may struggle in standardized metrics and structures of school. If we only measure their intelligence and abilities by how well they do on a test, we will never inspire them to find their own path to success." Mountain View's continual goal is to generalize all of the social emotional learning competencies so that being strong, kind, responsible, and inclusive are second nature and not limited to one-shot activities. Start With Hello Week was our introduction in September, which was shown to you during the last presentation. And Mountain View's growing partnerships with high school are another example of this. The Community Kindness Program started by Sophia Lakabucci.
Lakabucci.
Yeah. Did I say that? By Sophie, Sophia, right. Sophia Lakabucci and Eddie Polk is starting its second session in March. Students from Mr. McVeddy's AP Literature class came to Mountain View recently and taught all of the fifth graders the importance of being your best thing, even in times of struggle. Mountain View students sent supportive cards to a student in North Carolina who has endured horrific bullying at school and on the bus. This was part of the Be a Friend Project, brought to our attention by Unify Against Bullying.
That's actually up on Unify's Facebook page, if you want to take a look at that. It's pretty impressive.
And so Mountain View's Annual Anti-Bullying Week is another way the school accentuates a year-round focus on SEL competencies, a positive school climate, and strong relationships. Mountain View had another great week this year with activities balanced between whole school and classroom teachings. Some of the highlights of this year's Anti-Bullying Week included, the Mountain View Pioneers, Mountain View's Student Leadership and Community Service Group researched the life and teachings of Dr. Martin Luther King and led a school-wide assembly to teach Mountain View students about his legacy. The Pioneers led meaningful discussions in their home rooms after watching a video based on a what-would-you-do scenario involving bullying at a Burger King. The video was shared with parents via Blooms so the discussion could continue at home. Our annual Mix It Up Lunch was difficult for more students this time than in past trials, which indicates to us that students need ongoing skill developing when interacting with students they don't know well. Over 200 Band Against Bullying bracelets were sold by the Pioneers daily at lunch. We donated almost $125 to Unify Against Bullying. Students in Mr. Polk's African-American History class of East Long Meadow High School visited every classroom to read books related to inclusion, kindness, empathy, and acceptance, followed by student-led discussion questions. The highlight of the week, however, was the assembly by the Berkshire Hills Music Academy, a post-secondary school in South Hadley that teaches life skills to young adults with special needs. All Mountain View students were attentive and very receptive to their personal stories of being bullied and the students created beautiful Valentine thank you notes, which were mailed last week. We couldn't have been prouder of the students. The video in the upper left-hand corner is from their performance, and so if you play the video with the volume up.
All the performers are students from the Berkshire Hills Music Academy.
You said that again?
All the performers are students from the Berkshire Hills Music Academy.
So just to capture that, as far as I remember this, not only was it engaging with the music, but students gave their personal story as they were coming up through grade levels and some of, as Mr. Fred had said, some of the bullying and teasing that they experienced. And I think our students received that incredibly well and they commented, Mr. Fred commented on the thank you notes that they wrote, which were pretty impressive.
So students who attend Berkshire Hills are DDS eligible and they would attend after exiting their entitlement program at 22. So it's a very nice program.
Moving to the middle school.
Okay, so as far as supporting the whole child, we've kept a lot of the balls in the air, which we had in the air, which we have Thursday advisories, which are now by grade levels, so every Thursday, related to one of the five competencies of SEL is a full-grade lesson that takes place in the morning in small group advisories. Mr. Martin has overseen the mid-year students' feedback survey that we do, it's a pretty extensive survey with all students in the middle of the year and at the end of the year, and then he has long meetings with each team where they get individualized feedback on how their students are feeling on those teams. We have our staff book study going on of fostering resilient learners, how to create trauma-sensitive classrooms. Our SAM process, our student assistant meetings is deeply embedded in our culture at this point. We've had 22-plus students go through the SAM process. Our student council was awarded a Unify Against Bullying grant. We've had a couple of different activities with them. And in two weeks, we have a sixth-grade anti-bullying assembly coming in. We had hired two mentors, but obviously, we are not utilizing them right now. So a lot of the stuff we've been doing, we're continuing to do. What I want to focus on here is our work with MTSS. Learning about and implementing the multi-tiered systems of support sort of strategy has completely changed our school. We've gone deep into this work, starting Khan and I with the district. I went in September outside, I don't remember, Westboro, wherever we were.
Foxborough.
Foxborough or something.
There's a borough.
And then, so two days, and then Mr. Martin went recently with my school, with our school psychologist in Springfield. But we've really, there are two things we love about this work. One, it's connected all these dots that were dots that we had up and running, but we didn't understand how they all came together. And MTSS, it sounds goofy, but it's kind of like the sun, and it finally put all the planets in the right place. So that's one thing. The second thing is, it leaves you enough freedom that you build it for a way that works for your school. So we've really taken this work far and we've sort of built a system that I'm going to show you that's up and running in our school and is significantly impacting and changing what we're doing for especially average kids. So we started after sort of understanding it with a school-based MTSS team that was 10 members, including my librarian, my counselors, school psychologist. And so we have 10 members, we meet bi-weekly, so any Thursday where we don't have leadership meeting here, we're meeting with our MTSS team at the school. Then we had to choose sort of our kids to start with, and based on the new accountability system, we started with our lowest 25%, according to the MCAS. So that's our, and that's just seventh and eighth graders. Our sixth graders are not eligible to be in that lowest 25. So right now, our MTSS work is focused primarily on the seven, of course, we're trying to improve tier-one instruction at the same time, but the targeted stuff is working with the 124 seventh and eighth graders who are our lowest 25%. Our work started by building out new support systems, so MTSS tells you to have supports in three buckets, academic support, social emotional supports, and behavioral supports. We started with identifying what we have in each of those buckets, then we sort of started by creating, then we, our next step was creating sort of a wish list of what we would like to add to each of those buckets. Some of that stuff, we've got up and running. We have new iReady Math tutorial groups, myself and my math coach run one, where 15 to 20 kids, every time there's a tutorial, come up to the library and we oversee them on iReady Math, which is individualized instruction. So there's a couple of things that we've added as we've gone, I won't go into all of them. We were going to do Acceleration Academies, which is another MTSS suggestion in April, which was going to be for kids who need a little final push before, especially math and science MCAS, but the budget, we'll get to that next year, I'm sure. From the 10 on the MTSS team, we are using two to three members to oversee specifically one team of From the 10 on the MTSS team, we are using two to three members to oversee specifically one team of kids, and this will come to life in a minute. But every three to four weeks, the two or three MTSS members who are in charge of, say, our Garnet team, so that's one of the eighth-grade teams, so we know our, quote-unquote, we call them our boss kids. I won't tell that whole story, but they're in charge of our MTSS kids on Garnet. These two or three go and meet with the whole Garnet team of teachers, and they go individually by kid and figure out where are we at, what has improved, what have we tried, what's our next step. And so, this has become just a cycle of meetings around our most needy kids that's taking place. You know, he's on one, I'm on one, but then there's two that no administrator's on, but it's just already started clicking in a way that really matters. So, if you could click on that link, Mrs. Brown. So, this is our, a copy of our boss kids. If you could click on Garnet, on the bottom, I'm sorry, on the bottom. So, I've taken the names out, obviously, so we can't see specific kids. But this is the data sheet that drives all this work. So, Heather, if you could just scroll up a tiny bit, I'm going to focus on the one that's highlighted. There it is. Okay, so if you put that one up at the top. All right, so obviously, I've omitted the name, but this is an example. This is a Garnet kid. If you go from left to right, you can see their ELA scaled score was a 494, their partially meeting. ELASGP last year was a 77. Their math scaled score, partially meeting, obviously, the growth in math for this student was less. So, if you keep scaling over, that's their average scaled score. That's how Desi decides who our bottom 25% is. It's the lowest 25 of average scaled scores. So, they actually put this out, but we had done it a month or two before they put it out, because they gave us the formula, and then they didn't give us the kids till close to Christmas, which was kind of late anyways. So, if we keep scaling, scrolling over, you can see their iReady Reading Diagnostic 1, this student. iReady Reading Diagnostic 2, this student was unable to take. iReady Math Diagnostic 1, iReady Math Diagnostic 2. All right, keep going over. This next column says Math Tutorial iReady. This student is one of the kids that we took out of their regular tutorial, and now they do math iReady every three days a week during tutorial, because they clearly needed more math than they were getting. So, that's why this kid has a yes. If you keep going over, you can see we monitor if this kid has any of our tiered classes. This kid does not. Quarter 1, quarter 2, and quarter 3 are all blank. So, that means although this student is needy, they've never gotten to the level of need that qualifies them for a tiered class. You can see below them, you've got kids who have had tiered math or tiered reading, or a combination of both, quarter 1, quarter 2, and quarter 3. So, then the next three columns are the three buckets: academic support, SEL support, and one more behavioral support. So, you can see this student's getting a lot of support in the academic support category. On a 504, going to our eighth-grade counselors organizational group, is in math tutorial with the principal and the math coach. Also getting SEL support, is in our advisory, so that we're very close to this student on a daily basis. Is, was going to get a student mentor, and has submitted paperwork for River Valley. So, if you keep going over, there's some more just sort of demographic information. That absence letter, that's a big one. We've been sending way more absence letters than ever, really monitoring our chronic absenteeism. This student has not received one yet, which means absenteeism is not the problem here, okay? Then there's some notes, and then if you keep going over, Heather, you'll just see step 1, step 2, step 3, step 4. And so, this is how it works, like I'm, we go to the meeting, we meet with the team. Step 1 was, this kid needs to get in the organizational group. They don't know how to organize their work. Another step 1 was, we have students from Mr. Page and the high school come over to run a boys group. They run it in my office. We put this kid in the boys group to help with this student's transition into high school. Step 2 was, oh, we need some academic support here. We put him in math iReady tutorial. Step 3 was, we still need more social-emotional, so we put him as student mentor. And step 4 is that we're trying to get him referred to River Valley. So, basically, that's one kid of the 124 that we're looking at, and we just continually go through this. You can see it's the beginning of February, we're adding a step 4 with this kid. I can definitely say, pre-MTSS, we would have never looked at this kid this closely. We would have never understood to look at this kid this closely. We would have focused on, we have our tiered classes, we have our social-emotional support systems. We have, it's this data sheet and this work that's really driving individualized improvement for the kids.
I just want to add one thing. In the meeting with Berkshire Park, I just want to enhance what they're doing there. I mean, this is what I received at the top, is what they're doing now, their menus, so to speak, and at the bottom is all the ideas that they're coming up to add to all these four steps. I would want to commend those to administrators, because that's quite a list of all the different interventions they're doing now and what's going to be coming in the future, because we are going to fold into sixth grade next year, my friend.
Next year, we're going to include sixth grade right off the bat, yeah, this year.
Very impressive.
And I guess I could say, like, we call that the buffet of supports, so that's like the buffet.
No menu, no.
Yeah, you've menu, fine, but we call it the buffet of supports. So, that's why we call those kids the boss kids. That was also on purpose. We did not want to call them the MTSS kids, because then it would quickly get, that acronym would quickly get the wrong feel around it, right? So, we call those students the boss kids, the buffet of support kids, because they need more than just to walk in and have a regular day.
Sorry.
Oh, boy.
Is that high school?
Good job, Heather.
Working back to the slide.
Listen, we'll have to have a presentation.
Yeah. Sorry.
So, similar to what Dr. Allen was just talking about when it came to our first goal, our focus over the last few months has really been around the MTSS model at the high school and really working on different ways of embedding that in tiers 1, 2, and 3. What we have outlined when we pulled it up is really what we've focused on in that second and third tier with the MTSS team members that we've identified as well. I think one of the things you'll see as we work through all three goals is a lot of our work does connect back to this whole, supporting the whole child concept. You'll see that when we get into instructional practice, you'll see that when it comes into student achievement, but it all does connect back to these ideas. Now, what we've been working on so far this year in the last few months is really better identifying the supports and the criteria that we have for those Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports already in place. We've also been trying to assess what we currently have and will need going forward. So, at this point, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Wright, and he's going to walk through some of the stuff that we've done over the last few months, and then talk to you about some of the next steps that we're looking to take between now and the end of the year.
So, unlike middle school and elementary school, one of our major concerns is credits. So, we spend a lot of time tracking current grades, tracking how students are performing in their classes, particularly the graduation requirements. And so, when we look at, when we talk about our roles and our structure, a lot of that does revolve around just collecting as much data as we can in terms of, are we looking at, are we going to talk about, you know, our ninth grade, our incoming ninth graders, and we get them right now, and are they failing English and math? We need to get on top of that. We're looking at our 10th graders. They're prepping for the MCAS. How are they doing? We have some specific data related to that. How are those students doing? Then we go to our seniors. How many seniors are lagging credits? How many seniors are lagging credits and struggling right now? I mean, there's just so many different ways that students jump onto our radar. And so, in terms of our team, we took our old SAM structure with our guidance team and our SEL teacher and our adjustment counselor, and we transitioned really into meeting individually to talk about the students that are on that particular person's caseload. And so, we do go through, you know, I'll pull the eligibility report, and we'll talk through that with every counselor. Every counselor is identifying the kids in their caseload who's ineligible. That means they're having problems, right, whether they play a sport or not. You know, that is a clear indication that they are struggling. And so, we look at, once we find that kid, then, you know, our first conversation with the counselor is, how many conversations have you had with this student? You know, and so, the last eligibility report, I remember sitting with a couple of counselors, and there was kids that were never on our radar that are all of a sudden are right there. And so, we're looking at each other saying, okay, meeting now, like, this kid is going to be in your office today. And then next week, when we talk, let's, how many times have you met with this child? How many, have you called home? Where are we at? And so, we're really learning some of the struggles that our students are facing, just as a revolving door. A kid who's earning As and Bs, and all of a sudden, has earned Ds, and they jump onto our radar. And so, that counselor engages with them and puts some things in place. We don't necessarily have the buffet of supports, but as we move into next steps, we'll talk a little bit more about that. So, the one-on-one caseload meetings really have been our catalyst to get us into this work right now. Some of the SEL supports that we are putting into place are really trying to meet kids where they're at. We've been trying to be as creative as possible. If we, you know, we created a room that's designated for social-emotional support, but there was one, I mean, we could talk about one particular kid who wasn't using that room. He was using the gym, and so, and I found him in there, and no, he's been in here a lot lately, so we work out a plan with the teacher. Hey, if we can put these, if he can meet these criteria, can he spend 15 minutes with you during this time? Yeah, let's do that. And so, now that, now we follow up with that student, and with that guidance counselors, how's he doing? Has he been abusing it? Are we improving the grades? Is attendance improving? And so, really, just that sense of looking at every student individually and trying to meet those needs. The care coordinators, that piece has been fantastic. We made a slight shift in the way that we're using those folks at the high school. And so, I took them, the data, attendance data of, starting with ninth graders, take the 20 students with the, you know, the 20 students with the worst attendance, and they went to every home, and they're building a caseload that they will stay with for four years. And the way we talked about it was, we want them to be as proud of those kids when they graduate as we are and as their parents are, because they've been in their homes so often, and they know those, that core group of kids. And so, they've really took a hold of that, and they're, you know, they're buying in really to owning those kids and really trying to get a better understanding of what those kids need. We also have been going to the trainings. At that same time, while I was training on Tuesday, we had, you know, Frank was delivering the blueprint to the faculty to try to get them, you know, up to speed on what is this philosophy, what is this theory, and what does it mean for us? A lot of questions for them in terms of what does it mean for their classrooms, and so, that is a lot of our ongoing work. So, right now, we're really digging into more of the things that are outside of the classroom, you know. So, when we meet with a student, it's generally, if they're struggling with grades, it's, well, have you stayed after? You know, that's a basic support that we have. Every teacher has an hour a week that we can utilize, and it's just uncanny. How many kids? No, I haven't stayed after all year. Well, let's, so we call home. Mom, this kid's staying after every Tuesday. Are you okay with that? Yes, make him stay every Tuesday. So, when we transition to the next steps, a lot of it does have to do with really digging in and getting to know our incoming students. We've already been over at the middle school half dozen times for various reasons. We're really interacting with them to get a better understanding of the needs of the students that are coming in. To that end, we're working on one team for ninth graders for next year, and so, we're going to coordinate three teachers, an English, math, and a science teacher around one core group of kids that will, feedback will be coming from the middle school of those students that would best be served with ongoing team support. And so, they'll have that same common team meeting with the same types of conversations around students that are happening at the middle school right now. One of the biggest things about a high school that is so challenging is we don't have screeners. You know, you can't, you can't find a plethora of options to screen a 17-year-old on their math deficiencies. They just don't exist, and so, we're working really hard to try to figure out, how can we get some screening data? Because for us, our students take one, you know, one MCAS for math, English, and science. And they don't take that until eighth and 10th grade. And so, if we wait until that point, you know, we can use our eighth-grade information, and that's great. They're tested on completely different things, though. And so, by the time they get to us, we want to be able to identify some skill deficiencies that we can then find some programs that will be able to address those skill deficiencies. And we're looking for the same idea in terms of social and emotional. What are some traits that we can pick up that will help us understand if, when a student faces adversity, how will they respond, and so that we're prepared for that? We have our students go through a lot, you know, and they face a lot of problems, and we don't, we're not always informed. You know, sometimes it's, it might be, just recently, it was the end of the day, and we realized that this, one of our students had gone through really a life-altering situation, and we didn't even know. And so, it's things like that, just upping the understanding of our students. And so, you know, going to the health grant, one of the things, this is actually breaking news, but the health grant, we're going to use Kelly LaBumbarde. We actually have a meeting set up this week with a therapist to start talking about addiction counseling. We talk about, you know, vaping, or, you know, drugs, or alcohol, or social media, or cell phones. We're looking at building a plan with a therapist to get our students some addiction counseling. And so, we're meeting on Thursday to get that ball moving, really working hard to get a better understanding of what's driving kids to an addiction, and then try to help them, you know, combat that with something else other than whatever it is that they're driven to. And so, a lot of our work is in the next steps category.
Okay, so you can see, as we continue to do this work, it's becoming more expansive, and I think the work we're doing with the multi-tiered support system is going to help us put that, excuse me, put that roadmap together, so that people are understanding all the different supports that we have. Moving into our second goal around instructional practice. So, this is where we're hoping to continue to support our teachers, identifying innovative 21st-century practices, research-based instructional practices that put our students in the best possible learning environments and experiences. The professional development that we've planned and have implemented and will continue to implement this year is aligned with this smart goal, and we're hoping at the end of the year, we're seeing 90% or more of our staff understanding the elements of what it means to create that 21st-century learning environment, and probably more importantly, that at the end of the year presentation, we can bring anecdotes of what we're observing in all the buildings and talk a little bit about that as our staff has gone through more professional development with this and we get into more substantive discussions around it.
Just to talk a little bit about PD. Let me see if I should pull this up or not. I don't think so. I could pull up the database, but we don't have to right now. We've offered a lot of different things around 21st-century learning, but the other thing is kind of connecting it to UDL in the sense that we're removing the barriers to help students to be able to, for example, communicate. And so, we got Google Read and Write for the entire district. It's a Google Chrome add-on that allows for text-to-speech predictive spelling, all kinds of tools. I actually was talking to a teacher the other day who said, wow, this is better than CoWriter, and it's a lot less expensive. So, that's really helpful, and it's UDL in the sense that every kid can access it if they want to. So, we've offered some PD around that. And then, in terms of collaboration, we also got Equatio, which is like the math equivalent of that, and it has something called MathSpace, which allows for collaborative math. And then, if you think about critical thinking, the ST Math training that we have ongoing, we have a grant going with Mountain View and Meadow Brook. And then, finally, around blended learning and not just relying on technology, but understanding that, you know, 21st-century learning is much more than the technology. And we're lucky that Jeff Zilch offered a few workshops on blended learning that were very highly received. And with that, we've also tried to create some personalized learning opportunities for students. So, we purchased Lexia for the entire K-2 at Meadow Brook. And so, this shows that even though it's a, I was a pilot this year in the sense that, you know, we rolled it out, and we knew that a lot of folks didn't necessarily have the PD, the usage has been increasing. And I have this little tiny chart here that shows that it's a correlation between growth and usage. This one is for first grade, so it's got a lot of promise. And then, I did mention ST Math, which is available to...
I'm sorry, with that previous slide, by meaning usage, you mean the teacher's using?
Right, so Lexia, I should have said, I'm sorry. Lexia is, well, we're trying to improve phonics instruction at Meadow Brook with some other tools, but Lexia is also a personalized option for phonics, fluency, comprehension, vocabulary, and it meets kids where they're at.
I understand, I just didn't understand exactly what meaning usage meant, that's what I was just, now I do, okay.
Yeah, I can make that bigger.
That's okay, no.
All right, I'll make it shorter.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. No, I just want to know what meaning usage meant, that's all.
All right. See if it will pull up. Well, while it's pulling up, it takes a while. And then, ST Math was created by a neuroscientist who's also dyslexic, and so, it's all about kids accessing mathematical concepts through visualizations. And it's pretty interesting, because kids who actually excel in math by memorizing algorithms struggle quite a bit, because they have to understand the concepts below, behind it. So, that's another personalized, it is also, we connect it to our curriculum, our math curriculum, but it does adjust to where the students are at. And finally, we got iReady online reading for the entire district. We also got online, sorry, that's not true. We got it for third grade through eighth grade. And we have iReady math licenses for 6 to 8 for interventions and some of the 3 to 5 classroom... And some of the three to five classrooms are also using it for intervention purposes. And so, the usage of that, considering it's a first year, that has also been good. So, we have quite a variety of things, online opportunities for students for personalized learning, and we're encouraging home usage. Meadow Brook had an information night where they taught parents about how to use, how to access in Lexia and ST math at home, as well as some coding. The district curriculum website has information on how to connect to these at home as well. So, that's something that's ongoing in terms of increasing home usage if families want to have that access.
How is usage been trending in the classrooms? Are educators finding a way to fit the instructional minutes in that are prescribed by each one of these?
So, it depends. And since it's first year, you know, we're not necessarily jumping down and saying you haven't met the usage. So, in different places, it's definitely hitting the target and other places, not as much. And part of the problem, too, is that there's just a lot of online options. So, as we try to streamline as a district, the ones that we think are the best and most research-based, I think we'll get more usage that way, too.
Moving into the elementary schools, talking about how their practice is aligning to these goals.
So, I'm gonna present for three elementary schools for instructional practice. And then, we, our presentation is kind of focusing on the innovative practices. So, one of our key action steps for our building SMART goals was to provide professional development on the use of our newly acquired coding resources, as well as how we utilize our mobile Maker Space cards. During our presentation in the fall, we shared with you how our Maker Space cards are being utilized. So, today, we're really gonna focus and share about our coding resources. So, coding is the act of writing instructions for a computer to make the computer perform a specific task. At the K-2 grade level, that might look like kids creating a simple algorithm or set of directions to accomplish a task. For example, you may recall the video that we showed you in the fall from the, actually, a video from the end-of-the-year presentation last year when we showed you students programming a coding mouse with specific directions in order to navigate a maze to find the cheese. So, this year, we acquired a number of new coding resources, including basic coding games, Ozabots, and Dash Robots. In the video that you're about to see, teachers are exploring the Ozabots during professional development. Using the resources and time provided, teachers were allowed the freedom to explore, to learn through shared experience, and to discuss ideas for classroom integration. Since this PD, a number of staff members have signed out the Ozabots for classroom use for lessons ranging from number sense in kindergarten math to timelines in second-grade social studies. Do you wanna show that now?
On top, right?
Yes.
Trying. Gotta improve my PowerPoint skills. Yay.
This is the staff, PD. Richie looked perplexed.
Absolutely.
So, staff shared in their feedback that they were excited about these new resources and appreciated the time to explore them. But they were interested in learning more about how to incorporate them into an already busy school day. So, in response to this, our innovation team is working on shared Google Drive folders that will contain lesson ideas and resources for utilizing these new coding materials. Staff will also be able to add their own ideas to these folders in order to share with their colleagues. Okay, so now, on to Maple Shade School. Maple Shade School's instructional goal is to offer Project Lead the Way courses to a hundred percent of their students this year. They will be recognized for accomplishing this at the Project Lead the Way conference next fall. Project Lead the Way offers high-quality curriculum in computer science, biomedicine, and engineering. In this video, all of their fifth-grade students create personalized video games using Tinker as the coding and programming platform.
Tilt the screen and move the girl. And if you, you try not to get hit by the ball and try and get the treasure chest. And basically, if you get hit by the ball, you restart.
Did you show the code that you created to build the video game?
Yeah, so this is the girl's code. So, forever she's gonna, like, when you tilt the iPad, she's gonna move in the way that you tilt it. The blue ball, basically, it points toward the girl. So, it'll always be pointing towards the girl, and it just bounces around.
And the treasure chest?
The treasure chest. When the girl touches it, it hides, it waits one second, and then it, like, appears in a different spot and shows itself.
What grade was that student?
That was fifth grade.
Mistaken. What you show, that treasure room, what grade did they use that with?
All different grades. They can use it with K, first and second grade.
That's the base.
Okay, you had the entire staff there.
I know that, but just what grade?
No, that's the basis.
And they were using color coding to show, to tell the robot what to do. It could turn. It's the base level for what becomes writing your own code for video games.
And I know some of the kindergarten teachers said they wouldn't start with that. They might start with a coding mouse, or with the cards, or some of the basic games, but they could move toward that. And you'd be surprised at how quickly the kids really catch on to this.
One of our kindergarten teachers has been using it.
She's been using it in kindergarten, perhaps.
So, the progression is like coding on the little bot to coding the background in upper elementary school of what a video game or a robot would do, to then in high school, to script coding. So, if you've heard of like JavaScript, they're actually typing in the code. So, you go with like coding on the bot to doing drag-and-drop block-based coding behind the scenes to doing a type-written script code, which is like what professional computer scientists.
So, you can kind of see the progression.
I wrote my own code.
There you go, if-then statements.
At your stem of that last two, though, some of the eighth graders were showing their JavaScript. Yes, they were.
So, at Mountain View, teachers are very willing to share their successes with each other, as well as ask for advice on how they can improve their instructional practice. Early in the year, Amy Pelzik shared her learning experiences after attending the DESI MTSS training and started the discussion of the district's vision for MTSS and how Mountain View will work together on building this process within the school. This month, after Elaine posted pictures on Blooms showing Sarah Chevelli's class completing an escape room based on multiplication, she received several comments from teachers wanting to know more. Elaine asked Sarah to present how she uses escape rooms in her teaching at the February staff meeting. And then, the teachers were broken up into small groups where they tried to escape the fastest. The box on the left of this slide is a short video clip of their collaboration. The winners retreated to something from Dunkin', Dunkin' Donuts, the following morning. Can you play the video on that? Two more teachers have offered to present at staff meetings this year. One would like to show how she records video lessons in advance using Google Classroom, mainly for use when she is going to be absent, but also for students to watch when they have been absent. Another teacher would like to share her learning and usage ideas for the virtual reality goggles she received this year from NELEA grant. An example of teachers wanting to improve their craft comes from the fifth-grade team. After analyzing the data from the second iReady diagnostic, the fifth-grade teachers felt that students should have performed better on a few key standards. They worked together as a group and included the literacy coach and library secretary, as well as the fifth-grade pairs to create an ELA boot camp. Students rotated between seven small group activities based on the seven standards assessed, led by one of the teachers or pairs. This self-reflection by teachers led them to create a day that both students and staff felt was very productive. The teachers were also able to use iReady to create small post-assessments to look for growth on those standards.
Okay, at Bertrand Park, when it comes to instruction, I just wanna preface it by saying that I believe that the greatest strength that a teacher has is the ability to be a reflective practitioner. And everything that you're gonna see within this particular slide indicates a high level of reflection within our instructors that is allowing for a re-engagement with their curriculum that empowers the students, because each of these different content areas in the departments are undergoing some level of an initiative that is driving the year's worth of work. And each of the staff members within these departments are incredibly engaged. So, to start, when talking about math, we talked a lot about this last year. We geared up for standards-based grading. And this is the first year in which we're deploying the standards-based grading. And this has completely changed the conversation of what learning looks like in the classroom, because we have been able to transform the conversation from what is my grade to how am I learning? And it's education the way that it's supposed to be. On top of this, the math department, along with the ELA department, are utilizing the iReady diagnostics to really target the specific needs of each of the students in both just individual instruction and groups. In the ELA department, we have been fortunate that our literacy coach has been able to assist the teachers in providing weekly, standards-based assessments, low-stakes formative assessments connected to the week's worth of instruction. So, whether or not a teacher is working on The Outsider for the week or using Roll of Thunder, Hear My Cry, as a former English teacher, it can be very easy at times to slip into teaching the unit, teaching the book, and letting the standards slip. And this constantly keeps it tied to the standards themselves through a non-content series of questions. And based on what the results are, the teacher is then able to go back to the instruction and teach as needed. Social studies, I can talk about this one at length, so I'll try and keep this short, because I'm working with the social studies department this year along with our librarian, our literacy coach, in providing opportunities for our students within the social studies classes to practice high-level, rigorous, on-demand writing tasks to mirror what they will see on the ELA MCAS test while solidifying the importance of writing cross-content areas while utilizing a universal design-for-learning approach. So, when each task drops, the students using their Chromebooks are able to access the different texts that they will need to use in order to answer a particular writing prompt. Each of the different texts that they have have been annotated to identify words, challenging words, that might trip students up. Each of the words come with a student-friendly usage. So, if the word is very unfamiliar, they have some familiar context around with it. Each of the writing tasks come with graphic organizers, come with exemplars. And each step that they receive, each of the resources, come with an audiovisual recording as well. So, students can literally plug in and get the information that they need and then be able to output the information at their own pace and at their own level, using the resources as they deem fit. And this writing focus within the curriculum has allowed for a lot of strong conversation between departments, between the social studies department and the English department around what a particular cohort of students need at that particular time. The science department is continuing to examine NGSS and how to best implement NGSS into the curriculum. This year, they have been writing and administering MCAS-style open-response questions aligned with the NGSS, as well as piloting a couple tools at their disposal to prepare all of the students throughout the building for MCAS-styled questions. So, it doesn't matter if the students are in sixth grade or seventh grade. They are being prepped for ultimately what they are gonna receive when they're in eighth grade and have the science and technology MCAS test. And as always, we are constantly targeting our students to get better and better and better in the areas that they meet, whether it be in reading or math. And through targeted, small-group instruction, our tiered teachers have a number of tools at their disposal to help guide the students towards mastery of a particular area of concern.
Just wanna add for the science department, what we're working out with science exactly is we're building out five practice MCAS assessments. One for mid-year sixth, one for end-of-the-year sixth, mid-year seventh, end-of-year seventh, and mid-year eighth. We're in the integrated standards now. There's, the way iReady gives us formative data on English and math, which drives creativity and targeting, we need that in science. Because even with it integrated, we still don't have the right data set that gives you like a clear, long-term look at what a kid is good at and what they're struggling with. So, they're writing open-response questions and we're pulling MCAS-style multiple choice from JAGNOC. And tomorrow, we kick off a six-week Albert I.O. pilot trial basis with English, math, and science teachers. And so far, we learned about that from Jeff Zilch and from Mr. Page. And pretty excited for that to kick off tomorrow as well, to help us build this science data system that will allow us to reteach, to maybe find extra class time for it, whatever we need to do to increase science scores.
I just wanna add, it's a school committee rep at Bertrand Park. What impressed me about this slide was that there's eleven different missions that's happening as we speak, and they're piling three more, Envisions, and there's JAGNOC and Albert I.O. So, you got a lot happening, eleven different missions, but three coming along.
Yeah, we're blessed to have a teacher. Oh, go ahead. No, I was just gonna ask, what are you using as a point of comparison for the pilot of Envisions?
So, it's the only one we're piloting right now. I mean, as we get deeper in iReady, they have a pretty intense curriculum tied to them as well. You know, we went through that process last year and we looked at three. I forget which three we ended up at, but then we landed on trying Envisions. It's been good. It hasn't knocked it out of the park with us, but it's been good. It's written by Pearson, who obviously writes MCAS, so it's the big leagues. But I know that different districts have loved it and different districts haven't. I will say for Envisions, the updates they're about to do in March are targeting a lot of what our teachers' complaints have been. The individualized learning program is not as good as we wished it would be. Teachers can't really dump their own stuff into the different assessments they have, and they'll be able to do that more. A lot of their questions repeat themselves. So, like, if you give it as practice and then you give it as a quiz and then you also won on the unit test, it's like the same exact question. And now, they're changing it so that it would be different numbers, different little differences in the question. So, I feel like I'll answer that better after March, but there's no other pilot. There's no second pilot.
It's also a different iteration than the 2016. It's definitely gotten better, even before these new improvements.
It's helping us a ton with just structuring the math curriculum, without a doubt. The activators, the tickets to leave, the little mini-lessions that they have. There's videos. I mean, it's making math more web-based in a way that's good. And then, they still have to do a lot of practice, obviously, on the middle school. And then, we have pictures, of course, for this.
So, just here are four examples of different types of learning occurring within the building. Top left is an eighth-grade math class, learning about angles, using the hallway as its own room. Top right is a civics class. It's a review that he does every year with the students. He gamifies the civics process. It's very fun. Bottom left is our tiered math class, and our students are receiving instruction using a geometry board game. And then, bottom right is a review in science class using Jeopardy.
By the way, how right were you guys on civics? I mean, they're writing the eighth-grade civics MCAS. So, that was like that big thing a few years ago. It turned out to be exactly right, because we're preparing now for civics MCAS.
Right.
Okay, so...
So, as far as the instructional practice goal goes for the high school, the first two ongoing steps taking place at ELHS connect to the one-to-one initiative. If I go back to the December 5th PD day that was put on by Jeff Zilch, and these are practices that he's been embedding all year on an individual basis with teachers, but he did a whole-staff PD around the SAMR model in terms of integrating technology into your classroom and making tools, or I'm sorry, the tasks for teaching more effective using technology. So, on that day, he, you know, he worked with staff, had them collaborate with department members on how to embed technology into their lessons, while targeting the higher levels of modification and redefinition within the SAMR model. The other piece that he's been working on this year, too, in collaboration with his IT interns, is working on digital literacy skills with staff and students alike. And that all came together during our Digital Literacy Week, which took place at the end of January, where the students put together a Digital Literacy Week where every day they hit a different topic that connected to the digital literacy standards. And, you know, they went through things like screen time, your digital footprint, how to differentiate between real and fake news. And what Mr. Zilch also worked on during that time was with individual teachers embedding those digital literacy topics within their classes during that week. Another thing we've been working on is restructuring our department head meetings and adding individual conferences to drive instruction improvement within those. So, we always, we still have our monthly whole-group department head meetings, but one thing we started on recently was having individual conferences with each department head each month. And within those meetings, we're trying to drive instructional improvements within that specific department. And that's going to be something that I will elaborate on a little bit more and get into specifics when I get into our third goal, and it comes to student achievement, and you can actually see what I'm talking about with math, science, and English. The fourth step up there connects to what we've been working on with our District Equity and Diversity Committee, and that's where we have the planned PD coming up in April, where we have the NCCJ coming in to work with our staff around the ideas of building cultural competencies and building culturally responsive classrooms. So, and I'm not going to get too much into that because I know Heather already did hit on that one earlier. Now, as far as next steps go for the rest of this year, beyond just the PD that we're looking to run in April, we are also working on continuing to utilize our staff time and our staff meetings in March, April, and May to work with our staff around the ideas of the MTSS model and talk about Tier One supports and what their role would look like in that first tier if you're, you know, a core content teacher. And we're also, from there, taking time to work with them around the ideas of the five core competencies of social and emotional learning and trying to make sure they see a connection between the SCL, cultural, I'm sorry, SCL competencies and culturally responsive teaching. Our hope is by the time we get to the end of the year, assuming we have time, we'll have time to work with the state's SCL Equity Continuum Tool, which makes connections between the competencies and culturally responsive teaching.
Quick question, Mr. Page.
Yes.
Goal number three. So, do I understand that you have the monthly department meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you have probably 11 departments, am I correct?
Yes.
11 departments. And so, the really fine-tuned instructional leadership, you've gone to individual meetings because obviously if you're talking to the math department head, the PD department head probably has no relation to what you're talking about. So, you're kind of now crystallizing, so you're meeting with individual department heads.
Yeah.
Across instructional leadership.
And that was the idea behind it, I think. We still hold the monthly meetings because there's topics that all of them need to hear about when you're getting into things like school budget, the master schedule, things of that nature. But there's also topics that might be specific to math where you have to hone in on those specific monthly conversations. And what helps is having those monthly, they're standing, it's ongoing conversations, and sometimes it leads to more in-depth conversations around those topics.
That's a good idea.
Then, all of this contributes to the last goal we'll discuss, which is continuous learning and achievement by our students. And our hope is everything that we're doing and we've discussed tonight and continue to do throughout the year is working to support our students in the best way possible, so we're seeing them grow and achieve. Obviously, in terms of end-of-the-year benchmarks, and some of this comes from our state targets, if you remember at the beginning of the year, probably somewhere in October or November, we talked about how our students across the grade levels were in that typical growth range, and we certainly want to keep that, see if we can even move to high growth across the grade levels. And we are always looking at how our students are doing against the targets that the state sets for us. Part of this work, as we look to improve, and actually, Mr. Page was talking about how we're looking at, or he's looking at, at the high school, how you use meeting time differently and what you do with different departments. We're looking at that also with our elementary schools, and we started work last year with the district management group around elementary scheduling and what could we bring in terms of just basic best practices in creating a master schedule to open up time. All of our elementary schools have done a really nice job finding different pockets of time in different ways to help teachers meet, to help provide further assistance to students, and we're trying to see if we can even improve that and ultimately establish some collaborative planning time in the master schedule for elementary teachers, and if possible, to provide an intervention block for students that is consistent. And so, our work started last year, as I said, with the district management group in May. That was more a general discussion in terms of looking at best practices and being introduced to their software. Through May, June, July, August, and probably some of the fall months, we tried to capture the schedules that our elementary schools built into their software. And then we've come back together this February and started to look at what that, the schedules that we're actually running this year looks like in the software, and where can we start to look at some of these practices that we've discussed to get at these goals. It's going to be challenging, I think, as all the elementary administrators would admit, and we're hoping that going from our meeting on February 12th through March and April, when they get more individual time with the district management group at their school, they can start to look at, okay, so this is what we're seeing in the software, where do we see some things that we can start to utilize to create openings for this possible collaboration time for teachers at the different grade levels? As we get through that work, we're hoping then in June and through the summer to build in those schedules based on some of the recommendations that have been made.
It's pre-K through five?
It's pre-K through five.
There's also been some brief work at the three-to-five level, but some third- or fifth-grade teachers came to me wanting to improve the report card for a variety of reasons. And a lot of their concerns led us to realize, you know, well, what is it that we want kids to master? What are our priority standards? And how do we know they mastered them? So, they've been meeting quite a few times to just determine those priority standards and make the report card a better tool to communicate with parents. But because we want to have more clarity around what it means to master the standard, we've been looking at the Marzano proficiency scales, which is, an example is right here, where they have the scale, which is from zero to four, and it's the same scale that Virgus Park uses for their standards-based grading in math. And it really does outline, first of all, it helps to prioritize the standards because what they've done is kind of taken out redundancies and put things in different places that make more sense. Because if you look at a standard, there's actually many, many things embedded within that standard. So, they try to simplify it and also just say what it means to master a standard. So, we've been looking at those, we've been doing a ton of reading from a variety of different books just to really familiarize ourselves and build capacity for leadership around standards-based grading, so that we can kind of do another rerollout with our colleagues and start building, revising the scope and sequence, recreating assessments to help us determine that mastery and educate families about how we're using these proficiency scales, and most importantly, using, helping our colleagues use the proficiency scales. And the hope is that with this collaboration time, we'll be able to really look at those, look at student work, look at assessment data, and use each other to really help each other to look together and see where our students are at and where we need to go. So, that's been very exciting work. And to quote Trevor from years ago, someone said, "Well, we got to get our jungle tiger on," so that's what we're doing.
What?
One of our professional development presenters.
It was about taking on hard things. Yes. And first of all...
The zoo tiger doesn't take on many hard things.
That's right.
It's fed each day.
Right. But the jungle tiger has to go out and find its own food.
Just one point as we're thinking about that work. If you remember now, it was probably about five years ago that the three-through-five schools started the work to move towards a standards-based report card, and that was pretty extensive work and took over a year's time to make that move happen. The nice thing about this, as we know, is that we always need to be revisiting and looking at when standards are changing or how we're doing certain things, and the teachers were coming to us about this. These are discussions that Mrs. Brown's been leading, and they wanted to get into looking at this, which falls right into, which is what she said, but I'm going to focus on it again, revisiting the standards and start looking at, okay, what are the prioritized standards? What are some of the revisions that have been made? And these have been discussions that not only have we had this fall into the winter, but I know we've had at the school committee level as well, is making sure we're having those discussions. And so, seeing the enthusiasm, which is not always the case in education as you put a committee together, is pretty exciting.
And I should say that all of this is going to go back to our colleagues for feedback, and none of these things are set in stone at all. It's just a work in progress.
Has that group considered to looking at how the current grades of students are reflected or not reflected on the most recent iterations of MCAS? So, how are educators determining the grades in terms of the levels, whether students mastering a standard, progressing toward a standard, and how those are then matching up the subsequent outcome of their MCAS scores?
So, I don't know if I'm answering your question, so tell me if I'm not, but one of the things that's, because it's a three-to-five group, we're really also able to look at things vertically, and it's been really illuminating to say what I thought was a fifth-grade expectation is actually a third-grade expectation. So, I think that's going to help us align better with the MCAS as we have better understanding of the standards themselves.
Yeah, I was more looking at it, that's great, but I think in terms of, are we providing students grades that are in alignment with our MCAS?
I see what you mean.
Now that we've seen the new iteration of the MCAS for a few years, are we seeing educators assigning an M for mastering a standard, yet that student's coming out in a domain of not meeting the expectation of the standards?
And so, that's the hope of these proficiency scales because it really helps us to find what does it mean to make that three, which on these scales is meaning. And so, and looking together and working together to really make sure we're on the same page as to what that three means, and looking to see if it's aligned with the expectations of the assessment, yeah.
And one thing that's really hard about that, that I will say they're a head-on, is like in math, like if we, like sometimes the teachers like B-plus, A-minus, and like if they give the B-plus, the parents are all over them for the B-plus. Like, there is a real high expectation at home. But we're finding with our standards-based grading that it's like way lower stakes with how much feedback we get from parents. So, I, because I want to do what you just said, but I first needed to get into it. So, I do think once we get parents in the thinking that way, that's much easier to get teachers to also think that way. Because when teachers are given 100 grades, there is definitely, you have to push them to say, nope, like, we know you could avoid a big conflict by giving that one instead of that one, but it can be tough to get them to make that jump.
And the conversations were, sorry, go ahead.
The other hard thing is teaching and learning is a social-emotional job, right? So, the student that puts in max effort, the student that does all their assignments, the student who comes to school every day and is never a problem with anybody ever, and then all of a sudden, it's BP, BP, you know? You give the kid the M at the end of the year because the kid did a full year's worth of work.
But had it...
But the MCAS might not reflect the same thing. So, that's a hard thing to do. It's a hard thing to make a comparison to say, well, you keep giving kids M's that work hard, but they're not getting M's on MS.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. I just think it might be an interesting point of comparison, especially as we're starting to think about how do we, how do we norm expectations?
Right.
And that is one of the few norms. I mean, iReady could be another way to look at it, like is a kid making consistent progress across domains?
I think that's where we're, you're seeing as we do all these things for the first time, that we're gaining interest and participation, which in our previous software, Mastery Connect, we did not have that same response. So, we're excited about continuing those discussions and then seeing, okay, how does it correlate? How does our new understanding of these standards correlate just across classrooms? And then with what we're seeing on the MCAS. But I think it will be a work in progress because we're regaining again trust and understanding of why we're using some of this, where I think unfortunately, we're leaving a time where it was a lot more compliance, oh, well, the district wants me to do this, and not using it really as a resource as it could be for them. Oh, it's being built. iReady's the next slide.
All right. So, this is the mid-year diagnostic results for the entire district.
Defined district, K through eight.
So, at this point, the iReady is being used first grade through eighth grade. We tried to use it, well, originally when we were using STAR, it was second grade through eighth grade, and then for special ed at the high school. And so, we tried to use iReady, but it was just not developmentally appropriate for older kids. They're insulted by the babyishness. So, they are using iXL, which now has a diagnostic tool as well. So, just, you can quickly see here, out of all the students who took it, the diagnostic two is on the left and the diagnostic one is on the right, and it just shows movement. So, tier one means at grade level or above, and so, we had 45% of the kiddos at that point at the beginning of the year, and now there's 61%. Tier two is defined by iReady as one year behind, and so, that moved from 36% to 28%. This is reading, I should say. And then at risk for tier three means more than one level behind, and so, that was at 90%.
So, the more green, the better.
Correct. But you also don't want your yellow to become red.
Yeah.
Yes.
Tricky balance.
More green and less red.
Yeah. So, that's what's nice about this.
What view is this in? Is this in the standard view?
So, this is standard view. So, just for folks, there's three different views that you can look at for iReady, and it's all the same information, it's just the expectation. So, the beginning of the school year realizes that, well, I should say that at first grade level is the end of first grade. So, a beginning of the first year of a first grader, no one's expecting them to be at the end of first grade. So, there's a beginning of school year that kind of takes that into account. Then the mid-year is the standard view, and then there's the end-of-the-year view, where the expectation is that they have made that year's growth. And so, you'll see that with some of the other slides, I believe, in terms of how they define median progress as well. They expect the kids to be at 100% of their targeted, or their growth by the end of the year, so the mid-year is really only 50% towards their goal.
And is that gap in participation because of kindergarten?
Yes.
Or is that students who were in first through eighth that didn't assess?
Yes, so it's looking at, we have access for kindergarten, but we're not using it for kindergarten. So, yes, that and, you know, absentees and other things.
So, a number of students...
The mid-year happened to hit when everybody in the district was getting sick at the same time, which is fun.
Yeah.
Still happening.
Yes.
So, let's take all three schools have the big green.
Yes.
So, moving into the elementary slides.
I'm going to give this a go and hope my voice doesn't give out midway. I can see...
It was a good day. Good day.
iReady, AVMR, and ST Math are three of the common threads that we, throughout our three elementary schools, so we've chosen to focus this year, our presentation around those things. At Meadowbrook, we focused our presentation in the fall more on AVMR and ST Math, so this time around, we're going to try to show you some of the impacts of those and other initiatives that we have going on by showing you some of our iReady scores. Before we do that, just a quick update, we are continuing to provide support and professional development for our staff with AVMR. We have a lot of trainings going on this year. Our hope is that by the end of this school year, we'll have completed AVMR Course One for all of our teachers, as well as the initial ST Math training, K to two. for all of our teachers, as well as the initial ST Math training K to two. So just taking a peek at some of the data on this slide, this is showing you a comparison of iReady diagnostic one to diagnostic two. I'm gonna try not to repeat too much of what Heather might have just told you. I find looking at this very counterintuitive because we read from left to right, but it's hard to compare that. Every time I look at it, I have that initial gut like, oh, what happened? And then I realize I'm reading the graph backwards. So look at going from the right to the left when you're looking at our data there. This is an overall or very high-level view of our math and reading data. The great thing about iReady that is kind of unique, that didn't occur as much in Mastery Connect, is that we can continue to drill down. So you're looking at school-level data, we can drill this down to grade level, to teacher, to individual student, to where that student's specific strengths and weaknesses are. And that really helps our teachers be able to intervene better within the core. So this view, you're gonna see reading at the top, it's showing you the percentage of students in each tier at the time of administration, green being at or above grade level, yellow being tier two, and red being tier three. Ideally, Rich, what, you're correct, what you wanna see is that green growing, but growing from right to left. So you can see just by taking a quick visual peek at our graphs, that we've had some substantial growth in that green and reduction in our red. As you can see from diagnostic one to diagnostic two, our reading went from 27% to 51% of students in tier one. In tier two, we went from 59% to 42%, and in tier three, from 15% down to 7%. For math, the number of students in tier one went from 13% to 40%. The number of students in tier two from 75% down to 55%, and the number in tier three from 12% down to 5%. So this data is indicating to us that we're moving students out of that in need of intervention categories, down into that at or above grade level proficiency level. Just to kind of expand on that a little bit further, as of January 2020, our reading specialists have provided targeted intervention to 96 students. Of those 96, we've been able to exit 27 of them from reading intervention and pick up a new group of students that are in need of intervention. And when we were looking at that data, a number of the students were like, right there. They'd made significant progress. We're talking kids going up more than a full grade level in reading, but they weren't quite where we wanted them to be to release. So we're looking at continuing to provide those support to those students to continue to close the gap.
If we're looking at tier one as on grade level, then why then in the diagnostic one, are the percentages so low?
You're looking at beginning of the year and they're looking at standards that.
But isn't that on grade level relative to the beginning of the year?
To the beginning of the year, no.
It is, but our instruction is so good that they improved.
No, they're looking at mastery of.
They're looking at mastery of that grade level.
For the grade level.
So inherently, they're gonna be low.
That's right.
Yes.
Basically, the first one is showing you that you have.
So is it a relative analysis from one to the next if they're not gonna know anything anyway at the diagnostic one?
No, I mean, if this, this is the kind of the school level, but I've seen classes where the whole class starts off at green. And so that's why it's important to look at growth too, because.
Right, shouldn't most of them start off at green? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, so it really depends. And you're looking at little ones too.
If it's true to grade level though. Because it's not, it's not, it's relative to the beginning of the year, right? So the tier one is beginning, or the, I'm sorry, diagnostic one is the beginning of the year, right? So shouldn't they have most of them be at grade level already, relative to the beginning of the year? Am I reading that wrong?
This view is set up though to reflect mastery of the standards at that grade level as the expectations reflect the end of the year? So if I'm coming in as.
No, that's not what we were saying. We're saying they're appropriate for grade level at the time of the diagnostics.
Well, they're still expecting the kids to get there, but the expectation is that I haven't gotten all the way there until the end of the year.
Mastery of the standards is mastery of the standards. So they come in, get an assessment on those standards, you get a score. Then mid-year, they get an assessment, different type of, different assessment, but on the same standards.
The same standards.
Get a score.
Right, so.
End of the year, get a different assessment on the same standard.
With instructions, yeah.
So it's not relative to the beginning of the year, it's relative to the end of the year.
Yes.
That's true.
Yes.
It's relative to the standard.
It's the grade level they're entering. It's looking at the standards.
It's the grade level they're finishing on. It's the end of first grade.
It's the standard.
They're testing diagnostic one relative to the standards of the end of first grade at the beginning of first grade. So they're all gonna go up.
Yes and no because.
We better hope.
You better hope.
But this is not, this assessment is adaptive in nature. So if I'm coming in as a first grader and I'm not performing as a first grader, I'm not gonna continue to get questions on first grade standards. I'm gonna start to slip back potentially into kindergarten. Or if I'm a first grader who's excelling in a particular content area, I'm not gonna stay in those first grade standards. If I pass beyond them, I'm moving to second grade content. So it's adapting as the child is moving throughout the questions.
But this doesn't reflect any of that, these charts. He's correct.
What it's showing though is that as kids continue to make progress towards achieving grade level standards, they are gonna move out of that yellow or that red and into the green. So it's showing it, but.
But Mr. Thompson's point, would they naturally be up with the amount of being taught to standards as we go along each one?
Not necessarily, because if they were, then they wouldn't be in tiered math when they hit middle school. They wouldn't be receiving interventions like what A just described.
Why, I mean, why do we do the diagnostic one at the end of the year if they're not gonna know many of the.
So what's interesting with the iReady is that, so this is kind of a big view, but it will break it down for each kid into domains. So you can actually see for reading, for example, are they struggling with fonts? Are they struggling with comprehending informational text? So they're struggling with, so it gives you more information where STAR didn't really give you that. So this is kind of just an overall view, but what's more important is those, that student level.
And you can drill down and actually look at the standards, the actual standards. So you can see, you know, where they at. Are they on their way? It's either a check, they got it. Are they on their way or not yet? So it gives us a lot of information.
It gives you lessons to teach them based on their score, like the teachers can print. Each student in small groups, whatever.
I think your original question is what Mrs. Trulio was answering, is that it's adapting, that diagnostic is adapting to the student. So if they're not showing grade level, their, their questions are going to start to move down in terms of the difficulty. And so that's giving us an idea of where they're performing at the beginning of the year. And to Mr. Pachero's point, and I think your point, yes, we should see some movement. You should have progress as you go through, but also that second diagnostic is looking at where should they be in the middle of the year when we've taught these standards?
But it's not though, that's what I'm saying. It's either one or the other. So I'm understanding it two different ways. It's either in the middle, they're testing the middle, or in the middle, they're testing the year in the middle. The standards of the year, end of the year, in the middle, to see how far or how close we've got.
Yeah, the, the, the test or the standards aren't based on, this small component of the standard should be known at the beginning of the year. This other component should be in the middle of the year. And this end of the year is when you get the whole standard. It's not like that. It assesses what the intent of the standard is.
So are we saying that in the math and the diagnostic one, 13% of the students already mastered the whole year's worth of standards?
Yes.
So you would want to enrich them in some way.
No, I understand.
Yes. The importance of this is to.
Why don't we measure though where they should be in the beginning of the year? Because we math, it's all math, right? So why not measure grade one?
Because the, the importance of this program is to identify the gaps in learning at the individual student level, not necessarily at the curriculum level, right? So here are all my students in my classroom, here are all their diagnostic reports, here are all the gaps that I have in their learning and what we need to do as a school and as a teacher to fill in those gaps. Not necessarily what's wrong with the curriculum based on what the overall picture says. Because that's a hard thing to determine from these reports. It's more important for the teacher and the student to understand what the gaps are.
Differentiate form instructional clusters, right? I have this information that's gonna help you do that.
This slide that we saw, this is the one that's actually, so after that diagnostic happens, it creates a personalized pathway of instruction that's all digital. So students, if they log in and they start to receive lessons that are targeting what their next level of instruction should look like. So this was a slide that was saying, these are the number of lessons passed, and if kids continue to log minutes, the theory is, and they pass those lessons, which should be targeting exactly where they are instructionally, then that should help to move the.
And these lessons move through the standards.
They move through the standards based on what that child did on the diagnostic. So after diagnostic two, their path should have reset so that then they're working on that next layer of standards.
So even if they're a third grader and they've mastered all the third grade standards, they'll just push them up to fourth grade?
Okay.
Some of those standards are very broad. It's, it's not as targeted, like we can't say they're gonna learn these five standards in September and these five. To give you a really basic overview of one of kindergarten is count to 100 by ones, fives, and tens. That is an all-year teaching concept. So that is something that we're working little bits on throughout the course of the school year to get them to be able to do by the end of the school year. It's not something we just focus on in September. So it's embedded throughout a lot of what we're doing. So to break it down and say, why don't we just test these standards because this is what we taught, is very difficult because the standards are much broader.
But there clearly are kindergarten kids that can already count to one, to 100 by one, five, and ten.
We tried that with DVAs.
So that said, iReady does allow, provide standards-based assessments where I can pick one standard, it will give me five questions for that standard that I can give to my class. And then there's a second form with different questions that are also connected to see if whatever I did, they improved on that. So there is an opportunity to give everyone the same questions. But the diagnostics, like the STAR where like Sarah was saying, it's just based on, if, you know, if Sophia keeps getting them right, they're gonna get harder and harder. If she's getting some wrong, they'll get easier.
We'll do a diagnostic three, we do three in a year.
The third one will be a growth, so it's, won't give us as much information as the diagnostic in terms of those domains, because it's the end of the year and so we're gonna be doing it at the beginning of the year anyway, but it will tell us the scale score, which will give us this kind of information.
And these diagnostics take two to three days.
Yeah.
So when do we find out if they've met all the standards or they understand all the standards? If they're truly on grade level at the end of grade one, how do we know that?
The report card.
So.
Which goes back to Sarah's question, if they relate, if they're relative, if they correlate.
The teacher has, from the student information, from an entire year's worth of learning. That's how you know.
Yeah, because the iReady does have a standards level report for the diagnostic, but you don't get to see the questions, you're, it doesn't really, you don't really know exactly what part of that standard. So I tell folks, that is one assessment, one measurement, but you will have to look at the whole picture. And the work that we're doing with the Curriculum Committee, the three to five, is really looking at, instead of this old paradigm of just kind of averaging all together, if I've got a kid that according to this scale is starting to do this higher level work, even if they started off at a zero, I'm not gonna average it all together because they're showing mastery. But it's a different way of looking at it.
And iReady is one.
Right. That's what everybody's judged on, right?
Well, and again, back to Sarah's point, does it all correlate though? So is everything we're doing kind of makes sense collectively?
iReady shows through their research that they correlate very strongly or very heavily with statewide testing, and they're used all across the country, millions of kids.
And we're already.
So we don't know, like I keep telling my teachers, we don't know if it's gonna correlate in East Meadow, but everything they've done that got us to buy their package says they do very strongly.
And this is one assessment given at one moment in time. We have so many other assessments that we do with, that provide us such rich data on our students that we can't just say, we're going based on this one piece of information. We look at Bass, we look at ABMR, we look at ST Math.
Okay, great, thank you, yes.
So here are the Maple Shade reading in math from tier one. We went from 44% to 59% in reading, and then tier three, we went from 19% to 9%. And then in math, we went from 35% on grade level to 57% in tier one. And then from tier three, we went from 15% down to 7%, moving students out of that tier three. And then for reading, this is Mountain View, they went from 46% to 70% in tier one, which is great. And then 18% to 6% in tier three, which is also great. And then 33% to 65% in tier one for math. And then tier three was 12% to 3%.
That's what you want, more green, less red.
That's what you want.
So back to the same question, I don't want to harp on this too much further, 70% on diagnostic two, so halfway through the year, 70% had mastered all of the things they were to master in that grade level.
That's right. So they, more enrichment time, less computer time, they're, they're in good shape.
Okay, great.
Which, this is more specific information, better information than we've ever had. So we actually can push those students to.
Right, which is important, yeah.
Right. And something we've talked about for a number of years, but I don't know how well we've really been doing it with the other information that we were trying to provide teachers. This seems to have taken hold and is providing teachers with the information that they feel is going to help them differentiate and personalize learning.
And they do differentiate and personalize learning. Well, this is more in-depth than we're seeing.
Right, they haven't had this type, this type of specific information.
This program does it for us if you have the backend instructional side, which we all have for English, one through eight, and then we bought it for a lot of the math kids.
Three through eight.
Three through eight, sorry. We've all, we've bought it for some of the math kids in targeted situations. Whereas in other districts, like my kids are, they both do math and English, iReady all the time, you know, like so that is, that's the thinking.
You personalize each individual's instruction based on the results of the diagnostics?
Yep.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but as we're talking about this, I'm thinking about the beginning of the year view and the middle of the year view. So that 70%, for example, for tier one, is that they're at grade level, I, I already would, I would imagine would mean that a grade level is kind of meeting 50% of those standards.
I would imagine on this one, but I think if you wanted to see that, you'd have to flip it to the end of year view to be able to.
Yeah, so the end of year view will change, so I think, I'm, I'm gonna get back to you on this, but I'm pretty sure it doesn't mean that they're, they're where they need to be.
Because it's relative to where they are in the progression of the academic year.
Yeah, but if we have 13% at the beginning of the year, 13% of them aren't relative to where they should be.
Could've been.
But at the beginning of the year, say I'm a third grader, it's expecting me to have all of second grade.
A lot is lost over summer.
Yeah.
Don't, I, don't they say early sixth, mid-sixth, or is that my?
Yeah, they have bands like that that will show.
You can use a beginning. That's important, like they get, like I'm an early sixth grader.
I'm still on grade level.
I'm a mid-sixth grader, I'm an end-of-year sixth grader, like.
Right.
So you actually get like.
But you're still in there, yeah.
So I think you're gonna find that, I think one of, someone's gonna email you soon with like a better, well, more well-say answer. But I think you're gonna find like, no, that's legit, like at the beginning of the year, there's a lot lost over summer and kids dive into a diagnostic and it's.
But doesn't it have to be relative to everybody else though? So isn't that everyone else in the same situation? So is only in East Meadow, 13% are where they should be relative to the rest of the population of the United States?
That's a good question.
So that we would see more like in the scale scores, because those are normed nationally.
Yeah.
So we would have, like, there's different reports, it's just one report.
Can we just find out what that means, I guess? We should find out what a diagnostic one is, if it's, if it's relative to the end of the school year or relative to the beginning of the school year.
My money's on it's relative to the beginning of the school year.
Yes, yes.
Then we've got a lot of work to do at the beginning of the prior year.
Just gotta go to school.
Well, so.
Back it, back it.
Okay.
How to set up our calendars, especially.
And thank you for bearing with us, cause we're, this is, we're learning this whole program.
Oh, it's all new to me, so I, I don't know.
There's a view called beginning of the year view, which is relative to the beginning of the year. Your graphs look a lot better.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Well, especially if you choose them...
Oh, that's a standard view, it's a beginning of the year.
There's the answer.
And that's why the end of year view is different. That's why I asked the question originally, like what view are we looking at?
When the standard view, which is assessment of the standard.
Every time we run it before, we run it in standard view.
So you're beginning of the year, the beginning of the year and...
Wait till you see our data next year.
We're gonna run, hold it.
I gotta run the end of the year, the beginning of the year view.
Okay.
Now we're getting...
Beginning of the year for the entire year.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So this, here to confuse things more.
No, this is...
Oh, yeah, here we go. Here we go.
Okay. Is a, this is based on scaled score, okay? So what we did is we have a reading specialist service in both Maple Shade and Mountain View that has a full-time caseload. And in those student, those students that are identified for reading specialist support fall in what's called the lowest twenty-five percent of our students assessed in the state assessment. So in order to do great work with their reading ability and provide some data and some information that supports that from the reading specialist's positions and their caseload, we ran the scaled scores for all of our Maple Shade students receiving reading specialist services and the growth on average that the students received from a beginning of the year scale score to a middle of the year scale score. So in the very last column, jumping ahead, any student that was below four hundred eighty-five was in our lowest twenty-five percent of our population according to iReady's scaled scores. So then those students received services and they improved on average at Maple Shade by a growth of thirty-nine scaled score points. So on average, they probably started out somewhere below four eighty-five and now on average, they're somewhere above five-ten, right? That's good growth. Why is that good growth in iReady? How do we know that? Because the expected growth for these students for a full year is twenty-six scaled score points at Maple Shade and we're already at thirty-nine. Meaning that these students are compared based on all the students that take iReady that get a scaled score similar to them. And they've grown at a rate higher than what's expected in that whole population of students with similar scale scores.
So that expected growth full year is those scaled scores, it's not a percentage?
Right, so, so we're probably ready to look at our student, our students and their receiving intervention services and much like Ms. Loda, I said, sort of just moving kids out of reading specialist services because they're already sort of at, some of those are gonna be already at their targets for what's expected for growth. Now, iReady populates something called stretch growth, which is a target for students to not only reach an expected growth, but also be able to maintain it beyond their current grade level that they're in and throughout their academic career. So the, the idea that iReady has, has provided for us is that once these kids hit an average of forty-five on their, of improvement for their scaled score, that's called stretch growth. That means that they're most likely good for the foreseeable future. Like they could probably come out of an intervention, keep them in core curriculum and they won't ever fall back into intervention once they hit their stretch growth target. Um, and that's what we sort of aspire to have students reach is the stretch growth. But comparing our students to other students with the same score, their typical growth should be at least twenty-six scaled score points of improvement over the course of a full school year. Our reading specialist students are at thirty-nine, so they're doing really well. Mountain View's reading specialist students are at twenty-eight. They're also doing well because the expected full year's growth for those students is twenty-seven and their stretch growth is fifty-two.
But the stretch growth is also really critical for kids who are multiple years behind the grade level.
Right.
Because if, if they're to catch up, they can't just keep achieving one year toward the goal. They have to achieve more.
Have to stretch beyond.
I got that.
Yes.
They have to stretch beyond.
Which makes that number even more important.
I thought it sounded important, but I'm not gonna ask him. I'll have to call one of you on this slide. I wanna call one of the principals.
Okay?
Sure.
Okay, so for ours, we looked at it, um, you know, on one slide here, reading the math. I didn't show you the two triangles, I showed you the mid-year triangle, but you can look at the numbers next to it and see what happened in tier one, tier two, yada.
Did you use the same standard or...
Standard view. That's all we've used so far. Yep. So to me, what I really look at, I wanna get to looking at stretch growth more. I looked at typical growth for this slide, okay? So typical growth is supposed to be fifty percent or higher really through the year. I will say we gave this four or five weeks before midway through the year. So we still kind of kept fifty as our target, but we weren't really halfway through the year when we gave it. So for reading, on the left side, for all of our students, the typical growth was fifty-six percent. So that's above the fifty, which you want, that's good. All right, the typical growth for our tiered students, our kids who are in tiered reading was eighty-two percent. So that's, they're progressing very, in a rapid pace, much like at the elementaries. If they're getting this extra instruction, they're growing a lot faster or they're growing a lot more. Okay? For math, for all students, our typical growth was thirty-eight percent. I would've liked to have seen that in the forties based on when we gave it, but we're not, you know, we're, we're close. Our typical growth for tiered students was fifty-eight percent. So once again, for our students, for us, for everybody in this room, like, we're learning that these kids that get more, grow more, which is good data to drive our school forward for the next few years and how we can get more kids more that need it, right? And then for the kids that don't need it, those kids that are already in the green, at the same time, how do we try and achieve up for them? So, does that make sense on that slide? So the next slide, I think I did a picture slide here too. To be honest, like, obviously, we are really looking at data. We are really proud of our MTSS work and how it's impacting us. And we are definitely doing a lot of new programming and instruction, which we're happy with. But what we're also grappling with is we just wanna keep the Bursen Park sort of student experience. Like it's, I, I know this is anecdotal, but it's a fun place to go to middle school. It's not miserable, it's happy, it's, kids like it there, it's, um, and we gotta keep that, we gotta keep the fun, we gotta keep the spirit. We gotta make it so the toughest three years of your schooling in terms of your social emotional growth are not miserable. So we're grappling with how do we do all of the above and keep the student experience positive? So of course, we have all our DLCS stuff, we didn't focus on it in this presentation. We have coding class in seven. We have a lot of incredible things going on in that world. Our one-to-one, I mean, thank you for all the work this body did to help us get one-to-one. It's an absolute game changer at our school. It impacts every minute of every day. It makes everything so much better and so much more accessible for kids. So thank you to everybody that helped with that. Our robotics team is growing, um, and there's just more programs like that. And now we have two maker spaces and it's just not uncommon. Like, it just kinda happens without us thinking about it. Whereas two or three years ago when I was presenting a maker space, like every time you use it, like a big ordeal. Now it's like, I just walk into one, there's like a math escape room happening and I, what? You were there, what? Mr. Pachero, where you're like, what is happening in this room? And then in the other room, science is designing something to solve the problem. And it's just like, so we're just grappling with how do we do everything we've been talking about, especially raising our, our bottom twenty-five percent up? And also to get our accountability out, right? But at the same time, how do we not lose the core of who we are as a happy, fun, exciting, innovative middle school?
Okay, so just to talk about student achievement a little bit at the high school, what we've been working on in the last few months. So we don't have the iReady program at the high school. So what we've spent a lot of time working on, um, with our math, our science and our English departments, is working on identifying useful data, specifically where possible formative data that they can utilize to drive instruction in their classes. Uh, and this goes back to the conversation that we had earlier when it came to the individual department head meetings that we've started to have with our math, our science and our English department heads, where we've worked with them to talk about what they're doing in their classes, where we feel that they can gather some of these data points and starting to put structures in place within some of the MCAS-related courses. So we're talking ninth and tenth grade English, Algebra One and Geometry within math, and our biology courses to create some teams to start having some of these conversations and have some of these common, uh, common conversations rubbed out within their departments. Uh, so if you're looking at science, um, the area that they've chosen to focus on this year is within, um, the scientific inquiry and explanation part of their labs. And they're taking a CER approach, which is analyzing the students' responses to making claims, justifying those claims with evidence and then reasoning, reasoning their explanations as well. So this is, this is connected back to the national science standards and this is considered best practice within, um, the science frameworks. Now, um, what they're looking at, like I said, they're focusing on the different labs, but it's also open response type of questions. And they're collecting, right now, they've started using Google Forms to collect some of this information and they're figuring out the way that they want to, structure their data protocol conversations. If we're looking at, um, the math department, one of the tools that they've been working with this year has been Albert I O. And what I really like about Albert I O, you can see this sample up here, it's a biology class, but, um, uh, the program itself, it allows the teachers to design and create their own formative assessments where the system already has the questions populated in. And the teachers select from the questions they wanna utilize depending on which standards they're trying to teach. And then they build the assessment for the kids to take. I don't know if you've taken, used Albert I O at all.
Oh, yeah.
What's really nice about it is when kids get their questions right or wrong, it also gives a explanation to them afterwards in terms of why, um, if you wanna hit on that point.
Yeah, it's really helpful because like, especially if it was a question that you really struggled with at the end, it literally, and like I've done it, um, in my math classes, science, psychology, I've done it, history, I've done it in a bunch of classes. And it's, I found it really helpful for math especially because if there's something that you just honestly don't know how to do and then you end up kind of guessing, at the end, it will literally show you step by step how you did it and then how you should have done it, I guess. And then it also will show you why the other options are wrong. So if you had gone down the wrong path, it shows you like kind of why that's wrong, I guess.
So in, I think Sophia hit on it, what's great is it gives the students feedback,